Open up the, uh, school committee meeting. We'll stand to have the salute to the flag. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Ms. Dougherty?
Here.
Mayor Lahey?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Six present.
Okay, special order of business, tonight's meeting is public budget hearing, anyone speaking? So we'll open up the meeting for, uh, the public, public budget hearing. So anybody on Zoom, anyone speaking in favor of the budget, we'll open that portion to anybody in favor. Who's running the Zoom?
I don't think it's anybody in the room.
Jim, you're running the Zoom though?
No. I don't think we have.
All right, did anybody sign up this?
No.
Okay, all right. So in favor, in favor, we don't have anybody on Zoom, that portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition. In opposition. In opposition. That portion of the public hearing is closed. We'll now proceed to start on the voting on the FY twenty-two budget. So we'll switch over to page, uh, page one, we'll go page by page, line by line. Do we want to open up a general discussion or just start to the page? What's the wish of the boy, we just jump into the page by page, or did anybody want to? We did that last meeting basically? Okay, all right, so we'll start with page one.
If I could, if I could to give an update, uh, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, I'm pleased to present my recommended budget for FY twenty-two, which includes a culmination of direct feedback from nearly four hundred internal and external stakeholders throughout our community. Based on the committee's feedback of the prior meeting, Ms. Turner will walk you through the requested adjustments from that meeting, uh, to a few line items based on the committee's feedback. The response to Ms. Dougherty's motion is before you in hard copy, it's also uploaded for public, uh, at Wednesday's meeting, based on the committee's request for an accelerated, uh, response to that motion. That's on the school improvement subcommittee agenda for the public viewing, it's also available to the committee in hard copy. And Dr. Hall, uh, can walk the committee through the required steps for finalizing any, uh, related job descriptions, uh, which we have placed on an accelerated vetting timeline, and they are on track to be provided to the committee by Thursday. Our, uh, timeline that we've been working from is a committee vote on the May nineteenth meeting, that's what we've had publicly listed as a committee vote on May nineteenth, we're prepared to follow whatever, uh, requests of the committee for tonight's hearing to make sure we can get continued feedback, but we can provide any type of analysis ahead of the nineteenth as well, so that we can understand the impact of one item onto the next. If you recall our conversation from last fiscal year, the impact of one line item change could have an impact on overarching strategy and what goals we can commit to. That might be a, uh, impact that the committee is willing to adhere to, it might be an impact that the committee is unwilling to accept. So we will finalize any of that analysis this week in preparation for Friday's upload for Wednesday's meeting, and we have posted for final adoption on Wednesday, but again, we'll defer to the committee's wishes. You have our recommendation in hand, uh, now is the step for the committee's feedback and ultimate adoption. And again, the nineteenth timeframe is important based on, uh, city council's timeline, so that we can make sure we have an overall city budget uploaded prior to the next fiscal year, and Ms. Turner can walk you through that timeline as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you. So, that's, all right, so we'll open up the page one, any? Oh, yeah, thanks, Mayor. Need a motion to vote on the action of necessity, because the school committee will be voting for their own bottom line figure. So I need a motion by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas approved.
Before we get started, I just have a question for Mr. Hall, are we gonna see Ms. Clark on our screen at all then? Okay, on that, okay, all right. So right now, we can't see you, Hillary, so, um, so can I just ask a question, how come she's not coming up on our monitor?
They should switch it over once she's.
Okay, all right, thank you. I can't see you right now, Hillary, so if you have a question, um, just chime in. Okay, any questions on page one? Pretty easy. So motion to accept page one by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota. So motion to accept the bottom line of one oh six, seven ninety of the recommended budget. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas approved.
Page two. Any questions on page two?
Section three.
Sure, Ms. Dougherty?
I just wanted to know if the new positions are embedded in each, each page, so they are. So we'd have to know, because I, I'm not, I don't want to vote on any new positions that we don't have job descriptions for yet, and I didn't see any job descriptions.
Yeah, that was part of the.
Superintendent?
Thank you, yeah, that was part of our recommendation based on that feedback, that you could go to, you could approve on May nineteenth, we can accelerate the timeline and get you the job descriptions by Thursday. We've been working from a timeline of approval by May nineteenth, it gives you the opportunity for this hearing, if you choose to do another hearing based on significant feedback today, you have that placeholder on the seventeenth, you're not obligated to do that second hearing, but we have suggested and recommended adoption at May nineteenth, that gives you two public discussions, last Wednesday and this Monday. We did accelerate the job descriptions based on last Wednesday, so you'll get that on Thursday, and Dr. Hall can walk you through the steps that have to be taken to get you those, and you'll get those by Thursday.
I, I could see Ms. Turner wants to add something, Your Honor, is that okay?
Sure, Ms. Turner?
Also, um, because there are changes embedded in each page, if we vote on something without me pointing it out, you may vote on something you're not aware of, so I, if you want me to point out the changes on each of the pages first, so that you're at least aware of what you're voting on.
All right, so why don't we do that, when we go page to page, we'll have Ms. Turner introduce it.
I think it's very difficult to be able to take in the whole page without having some guidance, so that would be helpful.
Should we go back?
Okay.
Well, was there?
Well, page one was.
There was, the first one we just did had some changes on it. I can't hear you. Where did you get that?
So just to go back to page one, Ms. Turner, what were the changes on that page?
Okay, so the first, um, page is the school committee page, and the only change on that is it was recommended by Chief Hall to increase the school committee secretary to twenty-three five hundred from twenty thousand, which would cover all meetings, if more than ninety meetings occur in one year, that, um, should escalate to five thousand.
Okay, so we did already vote on the page, but I was kind of aware of that, so I kind of passed on that.
We don't have to take that one over, I mean, I, I understand, how many meetings did we have last year? It seems like we're having a huge amount of meetings, all through the pandemic, we met all summer.
Sure, Dr. Hall, do you have the number of meetings we might average out? Do you have your microphone?
No.
I think we're, um, gonna end up between eighty-five and ninety-five at the end of the year.
All right.
But initially, when this stipend was set, it didn't contemplate, um, this many meetings, I think it contemplated a meeting, uh, every other week and a reasonable number of subcommittees, but over the last, um, few years, um, and because of the pandemic, we've had an increased number of meetings, uh, so it appears to have gone up thirty percent in the number of meetings.
Right, so it went up thirty percent at least. Any questions?
Seems to me, then, the compensation should be going up more than it is.
More than the thirty-five hundred?
We were paying twenty thousand to, um, this superintendent, I mean, the, uh, school committee secretary we had ten years ago. Why not at least a thirty percent increase in the stipend would be what, six thousand dollars?
We can assess that and analyze that, that's the type of feedback that I think is valuable here. I wouldn't suggest that we get into one-off salary increases within a budget, but if that's a, if the request is for further analysis, uh, which is, again, what I think would be a more productive use of the time, but I'll defer to the committee, might be to just flag the areas for further analysis. There's not an obligation to vote or lock yourself into, and we can provide you that analysis prior to next meeting, and then you know, uh, you have all that data in front of you before you lock in your vote. That might be one way you could take this meeting, uh, which then allows us the time for analysis, so we can flag that and conduct that analysis on behalf of the committee.
I think that's an excellent suggestion, we already voted on this page, I'm not, I don't want to go back, but seeing that and given the information, we clearly had way more meetings than we've ever had in my experience of being on the school committee. And in the, getting minutes and being able to document those results are important to the community and to the work of this committee. So I appreciate, uh, Dr. Boyd looking into it further, but I'm happy to keep going. But if we could, when we get to each page, just be, pointed out what's different than what we normally see here, or what we saw before, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I just clarify, are we trying to identify new positions, that's what I thought we heard from Ms. Dougherty versus changes? I mean, I feel like I can pretty clearly see the difference between FY twenty-one dollars and FY twenty-two dollars, but a new position might not be something that always, I mean, you can see that if there's no FY twenty-one dollars and there's only FY twenty-two dollars, would that be assumed to be a new position?
Well, I think when Ms. Turner introduces the page, she'll just, uh, give us a quick overview and that'll all be included. So it'll, it'll be part of the discussion, but most of it is gonna be on the new changes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, all right, so page two, Ms. Turner?
So on page two, that's the superintendent's page, according to DOE, um, function codes, we have to put the assistant superintendents on this page, we are not part of his office, we're part of our own offices, but they have to list it here, um, there are raises listed in there that were part of the contracts. Um, the bottom expenses stayed the same, and that includes things like American Association of School Superintendents, Mass Association of School Superintendents, um, chapter seventy forums, legal practices, all of those type of, um, memberships. The next page is the fourteen hundred series, which is finance and administration, you'll see green highlighted rows, which are the additions of ESSR-funded items such as, um, one re-engagement center clerk and one director of technology.
All right, we're just doing page two, though.
Oh, I, I was on page two, okay, go back to page two?
Yeah, we're just on page two first.
Okay.
We're gonna go page by page, yeah.
All right.
Okay.
So.
All right, so page two is just really salary increases. Right? Yeah, okay, so no questions, move to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota, uh, on the bottom line of one, one two six eight three three. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty? Mayor Lahey?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas approved.
Okay, page three, Ms. Turner.
Again, the, the, um, changes on here are just the ESSR funded positions, such as the re-engagement center clerk, which is your first green highlighted area, and the second would be the director of technology.
Okay, Ms. Martin?
So descriptions exist already for both these, these are both positions that are coming back, correct?
Yeah, any adjustments to the descriptions would have to be negotiated through with the representative body, some of these do have some adjustments since the prior description. So we have, um, if it behooves the committee, Dr. Hall can walk you through the process, anything that is set will come to you as a standing description, and then you'll get the adjustments for those, there are some, uh, of those that had been pre-existing positions, but now bringing them back, it requires some adjustments for twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two needs versus where it was. There's, um, would it help the committee for Dr. Hall to walk through those steps, or would you just like that type of answer with each of them?
Yeah, I think we can hear the steps now and then.
Dr. Hall?
So members of the committee, we have received, um, proposed job descriptions from all the chiefs in regards to the proposed or recommended new positions for, uh, their areas, I'm going, uh, through those, uh, one by one to, uh, compare to what analogous, um, positions we get in the collective bargaining agreements, and also, um, negotiating them back and forth, uh, with the unions, uh, as well. I do hope by Wednesday or Thursday to have a finalized draft on those available to send to the committee. But that's where the process is now, we're also analyzing whether if past, uh, new, or, sorry, past new, uh, positions have usurped, uh, some of the old job descriptions that we are now attempting to bring back to, to eliminate that overlap. So hopefully, we'll be able to get your, uh, products by, uh, midweek or Thursday.
Ms. Dougherty and then Mr. Dillon?
So in specific to this page, the director of technology position at a hundred and twenty thousand, was that a prior position that we had in the district with that title and that salary?
I believe it, so. Yes, uh, however, I don't know what the, the salary would be, um, if you compounded it with all the past union increases, so, uh, that's part of the analysis as well.
And so is this position a union position, it would be in the LSAA union?
Which positions are unionized or not is part of the vetting process, so the, each union needs to be negotiated with and discussed, what are they identifying as representative within their union, and what are we identifying, it's part of the vetting process, Dr. Hall's engaged in with all of the unions. So we'll be able to.
So for this position, is the answer, we don't know yet, or?
I think to protect the city's interest and the committee's interest, that would be my best answer right now, uh, it's an ongoing process with all of the unions for every position, uh, based on, based on the prevailing law, typically, there's different, uh, interpretations of the prevailing law when we get into those negotiations, hence Dr. Hall's discussions with each, but, uh, without getting into those negotiations, it might be best just to leave it at abroad for all positions rather than going into each and every one.
So does it make sense, since we're still missing information on many of these new positions, to just put them all aside for now, pull them out of the, the page? Because I, I don't feel comfortable voting for a position that I don't know anything about, that we still don't know, is it gonna be a union affiliated, or is it not? If it's not affiliated with, affiliated with the union, how are things like retirement benefits and things like that gonna be costed out and paid? So I just think there's a lot of unknowns, so I'm, I'm looking for your suggestion of the best way to go forward.
My suggestion is that you flag those, that you have questions, we do know the job description was a question from the last, that gave us time to accelerate that timeline, so we can get that to you by Thursday, the same with the prior analysis, flag those areas that you have questions, if we can answer them now, we'll do so. If not, we'll give you the analysis and get you the analysis, uh, ahead of the need for vote on next Wednesday. But I, I do think if you pull one item out, there's also an analysis of what the impact of that one item might be on the rest. Uh, I can give you, this position allows perfect example here, you're looking for a job description on the director of technology, but if we actually couldn't approve the director of technology, we can't, we can't commit to the rollout of all of the technology initiatives that we have going forward, we'd have to scale those back based on the level of staffing we currently have. Now, I, so I would suggest that we flag it, we'll bring you the answers, if we can't bring you the answer, we'll tell you we can't bring you the answer, but you have time until May nineteenth to adopt, and that would be the best, best course of action, I believe, we can give you all that feedback, all that analysis, including job description between now and then.
So if I understand you correctly, I just want to follow up, because I, I'm, it's a little hard to hear you through the mask, I don't know if anybody else is feeling that.
Yeah, it's a little hard.
I, uh, you're saying move forward and you'll get us the information, meaning vote to approve this page?
No, I'm suggesting you withhold the vote altogether, and you just identify any question from any individual member, we don't need a vote on, I think the budget is a big enough item that will work to get you that analysis from every individual member, so you go through, read each item, uh, line by line, we can share with you what it is, if you have a question such as that, we need a job description, we'll take the note, we'll make sure we can provide you the job description in advance, there's not an obligation for you to take action on each item. There's not an obligation for you to take action on each item.
Tonight?
Tonight.
So we don't have to vote the bottom line page by page if there are new items that we don't have all the information?
That's correct. We actually have publicized that May 19th was our expectation for budget adoption by the committee in our informal discussions with staff and other stakeholders.
I guess it's either way. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yeah. I, so I, I think we should go forward with not voting, right, on every single page? But tonight is a good night to go ahead and analyze positions and make marks and be prepared for next week, right? Is that good? Are we all on the same page there? Yeah? Because we can still go through and talk about, I mean, we got, you know, we gotta give them input, and, and next week, we come back with changes, you know, and do the voting then. If it's not necessarily, if it's not necessary tonight, I say we leave it alone, right?
I'd rather do it next Monday because Wednesday's meetings is too long anyways, so. But Ms. Martin, you.
Or we can work it out.
Sure.
But so I have a, just a quick comment on the page, if I could. I, you know, technol, the technology department itself, we're taking on a lot of new work in that area. So I, I think it's really important that we increase the size of our staff. We, they need more hands. So if, if we can find them, more workers, and you know, the, the director of technology is, you know, may, maybe a needed thing as well, but they need help on the ground, definitely, because they have been absolute champions during this whole COVID situation. They've been working every day. I get emails every day. They have a tent set up, and they've really gone above and beyond. I think they, they need more hands. So if we could look to get them more help that way, I think that would be a big, a big help. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess just in hoping that we'd be able to make some decisions tonight, I know that we had had a discussion at our, at the previous budget presentation about taking the positions that we did have questions on, to say we're going to flag them, not really a budget term. But the action the, the committee can take is to take those items, put them into the suspense account so that they still exist within the budget, but you'd be able to vote on the page without them, at least finalize that, and then have those positions in abeyance in the suspense account that we could pull them out as we approve the actual job descriptions. So we'd be able to, tonight, be able to go through, vote on some of these, you know, the, there's two items out of this whole page that we have questions on. So if we can pull those two items, we can finalize everything else, and then be able to look at all the work that's in the suspense account and be able to focus on those, hopefully on next Monday, when we have all the information and be able to just pull those out as we, as we go.
All right. Because I'll speak last after everybody speaks, but that's the way I'm kind of used to doing it, too. So Ms. Turner?
I just wanted to point out, this is one of those issues with fund management. So even if we pulled those out, it's not really part of the general fund that you're voting on tonight. The numbers that we have as bottom line is called general fund numbers. These are all the green that you're questioning are all ESSR funds that are not getting voted on. So that's not part of that general fund column that you vote on. It's just the grant section. So if we pull it out, we could just, we could still pull it out and put it in suspense, but it's still, it's not part of your overall number. It won't change the bottom line on the p, on the page because it's just general fund.
And is that the case for all the new positions? All new positions are going to be ESSR-funded?
Mostly, mostly, except like, say, for instance, when we get to social workers, we reduced by the 36 social workers because we put 43 on the ESSR funds. So that is, that, I'll point it out as we go and just bring it to your attention. But yeah, mostly, it would not impact your bottom line figure.
So basically, that's just a, a win for math tonight?
Yeah.
That we don't have to do the math as we take these things out?
Exactly, exactly. Thank you.
All right. So one quick question from me is if, if what you're saying with the green lines are all grant-funded, ESSR?
Most, yes.
Okay, so what happens in two or three years when all this money runs out? Now we've got a lot of money on our hands.
Yeah, you're, you're in the same position you're in with the remainder of the budget. However, you do have a three-year horizon here. So what you have is, so typically, as a committee, you're not working with a three-year funding horizon. You're working with a one-year funding horizon. Here, we, we've mapped all of these positions out, so you have a commitment of funds if the committee chooses to apply that commitment for three years. So you wouldn't be, you wouldn't be entertaining that conversation, Mr. Mayor, until you get to the end of three years, which gives you decisions at the endpoint of each fiscal year, where you can choose to either move the position into the general fund if you choose, leave it in the grant if you choose, or the individual within the position could choose to move into another position, which could ultimately vacate the position. So you have extraordinary flexibility with how we map the grant against three, three years. So that's how this grant is used. So you'll notice within the bottom line of the grant, you're only using a portion of the grant in this fiscal year. Next year, we'll come back to you with another portion of the grant recommended, and as well, the following year. And that's the sustainability measures that have been put in place.
Okay, but one thing that I see is, so right now, we're saying we have five assistants, and only, and only two assistants have clerical staff. And then we don't have a director of technology, but that seems like that should be a permanent position for the next umph years.
Yeah, so next year, so at the end of next year, we could make one of two decisions. We can keep it in the grant, which is you'll have that funding there. We can move it to the general fund, or we can make a third decision that's in front of us at the end of next fiscal year. But you'll have that flexibility for the next three fiscal years in front of you. So this, if including this, next year is one, two more subsequent years, you'll have the flexibility where we have mapped within the grant, or you could move it into the Student Opportunity Act as we see what those dollars will be each year. So it is a way that we map the grant that gives you three years of flexibility that allows you to sustain that funding for certainty for those years.
All right, but the thing, I don't want to belabor this, but the thing that I'm looking at that I see is, that's like me saying to you, you, I'm going to give you an executive secretary for three years, and then can't fund it, so, and that doesn't seem reasonable to me. You need to have an assistant, don't you, if you're, if you're assistant ma, superintendent? Don't you need someone in your office to work with?
In, in some ways. Some of them, we have been eliminated in prior years. Some of them have been added in, in current years. The superintendent's office is a little bit different because it's an office manager, really, as opposed to a secretary. But it's a, but outside of that, you can make those decisions each fiscal year. So we, we are in these discussions every budget year. You just have the added benefit of the ESSR grant with how we mapped it, that you have the added benefit that it's mapped across three years. But every year, you're going to be in those conversations. We also have to see how the Student Opportunity Act rolls, that moves out. We have to see how many students we have in the district, and those are significant differences for next year's general fund. I think you are managing the ESSR effectively by looking at it as a three-year horizon. That's not an obligation of the committee. That's our recommendation to the committee.
Okay. Who had questions? Ms. Turner?
I just wanted to point out that on the same page is a perfect example of what fund management is, what the superintendent is talking about. Yes, we could put it on the Chapter 70 budget, but being that it's a new, it's new to this year, and we had the new funds, why not put it on ESSR? But if you look at the Staff Council for Student Services, it looks like we went from 1 to 1.5, when in reality, that's just an example of fund management. We had one on the grant, 1.5, we had two positions, 0.5 each, went on the grant, and this year now, we're putting 1.5 on the general fund and only 0.5 on the grant because we're cleaning up the grants and making movements to the general fund. So that's an example right there, Mr. Mayor, that we could do next year. We could move the director of technology over to the general fund when we're cleaning up the funds.
Okay. All right. So Ms. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and I think it's important for us to note, too, that, because I think to your point, as we look at this as a three-year kind of, you know, event horizon, the reality is, is that these ESSR funds are meant to basically fund our recovery from the pandemic. I mean, it's why the, the federal government has directed them at us, and it's meant to fund what is an intensive effort over the course of the next three years to help our district and our students and our, you know, staff and teachers and administrators recover from what has been, you know, obviously, an extremely challenging year in a lot of different ways. At the end of those three years, I have no doubt there are going to be positions that go away. You know, if we're looking at the, the positions we're filling specifically around recovery, whether that's tutors or maybe social workers, and I, I think it's important that we're honest about that. As we're bringing people on, you know, we, we fund grant, we have grant-funded positions all the time. And as people are hired, they're told, this is a grant-funded position. This is the name of the grant that's funding it. This is how long it lasts. So I think we need to be very upfront and honest with people as they're coming into these positions, that some of them are necessarily going to end at the, at the end of this three-year period. Some, as, as we're hearing, will be shifted on to Chapter 70 because, you know, we obviously will need to retain them and that their usefulness over the long term for the district is going to be, I mean, like a director of technology, I think is going to be pretty obvious. But I think that there are, the reality is, is that with this huge amount of money, there are going to be positions that at, when this funding goes away, these positions are going to go away. So we, I just think, you know, again, to make the point that, A, we need to be direct and honest with people as they're being hired, so that they do know to look for other opportunities in the district over time and, and all that. And I also think it's going to be critically important to that far-future school committee to recognize that there could be significant unemployment costs that will come along in that last year that will need to be absorbed by an operations budget. That's going to be a real, that could be a very real challenge.
All right. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. That actually is a great segue to a question I had. If in the job descriptions for these positions that are being funded by the ESSR money, if we include this is a grant-funded position that's going to sunset in two years with the potential of being rolled over, blah, 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 does that protect us from having to pay unemployment? It does not. So anybody we bring in that we don't keep on full-time with benefits is going to cost us unemployment costs if we lay those people off.
Yeah, I think the one variable that you can't account for is natural attrition and, as well as movement across into sustainable positions. Oftentimes, what we find, and Ms. Martin's absolutely right, we have grant-funded positions all of the time. Often, what we find is that people that are, individuals that are interested in continuing with the district, we have enough attrition that they ultimately move over into another position if they're interested in staying with the district. An example of, one of those examples, if you recall, the safety coordinator position was funded by one grant. We're now bringing it back to you to be funded with this grant. So that was a grant that had ended. It wasn't a way for us to sustain it within the budget, so now it's coming to you within a grant funding. That's not an individual, but that's a position that now will be sustained, even though it was a position that was ended. You'll have, we have a number of examples of that, of individuals that are in grant-funded that move over into non-grant-funded. And we also have a lot of positions that ultimately, we strategically eliminate them when they vacate rather than allowing them to run their course if we know the grant's ultimately going to conclude at the end, in, in near term. And so attrition and transfers also help with that.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a question about, since we're talking about grants extensively, and we do rely heavily on a lot of the grants that we do get. How, I mean, we've only got a, one grant manager on this listing here. I mean, shouldn't that be more than one for, for the number of grants that we did? I know some of them take like forever, huge, and, and.
Ms. Turner?
I'll, I'll let you answer that question. Thank you.
Either one.
Ready, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Ms. Turner?
No, we, we actually appreciate our grants manager a lot. She does have clerical staff, but between myself and Ms. Kelleher, we work on the grants, like she handles all the grant and the grant drawdowns and all of that. But fund management, like going back and forth between, that's done a lot by my, by me, you know, as far as knowing which, where to put it on, on the budget. So no, we, she's, we don't need additional staff in that area, not at all. Nope. She's, she works hard. She does. She works very hard, but she's, I, I think she would agree with me that we don't need another one.
Can I just, Mr.?
Sure, Ms. Clark, and then Mr. Dillon?
I, I just want to, I appreciate the discussion, of course, but I also want to acknowledge, I've, I've heard it a few times now, that this budget was put together with the input of about 400 people who are close to the work. And I think, obviously, it's important to have healthy discussion and oversight, of course, of the, the budget as a whole with, with solid questions. But I do believe, especially in this time where we know we've got this ESSR money, that, that really, a lot of thought was put into where are we providing the additional support and the additional needs? So I would, I would say, you know, there are great questions being asked, but, you know, to suggest that we're now adding other positions that, that, this, this team, in addition to many other people across the district that are close to this work, have, I think, have added positions where need has been identified. And it's not to say that, you know, additional help could be, would benefit, you know, but I think folks who are doing this work have said where the need exists and have, they've, we've identified, you know, we being the royal we of this team has identified where those highest priorities are. So that's just my two cents on this process, and thank you.
Sure. Ms. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I was just going to confirm with Ms. Turner. Maybe was what Mr. Dakota was asking is like for more help writing grants? Is that, could you just, maybe you could just explain that again? Just, I mean, grant writing, like putting grants together or applying for grants is tedious work, is it, isn't it? I mean, yep?
It is, and we do, we have retained a woman that spent 41 years in the district, Ms. Kajaka, and she actually has a stipend, and she continues to help us write our grants. And many of our grants are entitlement grants, which she can help with. And Ms. Desmond also writes a lot of the competitive grants. So right at this point, it would not benefit us to hire another full-time or part-time person to assist us with that when there are so many other areas?
Yeah, no, I'm not questioning the work that anybody does. I just, you know, I, I have a little bit of knowledge of what kind of work goes into it, so I was just one, you know. All right, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Let me just make one comment, and this is directed to everybody, but I just want everybody to remember, and this is kind of what jogged my memory when you spoke, Ms. Clark, that the committee, the bottom, the, the bottom line ends with us. We hire the superintendent, he has a staff, they make the suggestions. It's on our shoulders. So we appreciate your expertise, Mr. Superintendent and your team, but the bottom line is on us. So if we don't question, we don't ask, failure is on us, not on them, on us. So that's why we're going to make, ask, you know, for information and things like that. So I just had a question, too, on page one, if you all set or? Just, so when we have, Mr. Superintendent, we have director of technology we want to add, but then we have manager of ICTS, and then we have network manager one. We go down assistant manager one, help desk. So help desk one, district webmaster one, and then we have media technology support liaisons three, computer repair technicians one. That seems a little light with all the computers out in, we must have 15,000 computers out there, right? So shouldn't we have a couple more repair, a couple more support staff? Like, I can't imagine that one or three people can fix all these computers that are breaking down.
We can certainly analyze that and assess it and come back to you. I think that was the question that came from, that's the question that came from Mr. Dillon as well. So I have a note here for an analysis of the number of texts. Ms. Desmond heads that department for us. She can give you her best answer right now. But I think the best would be for us to analyze it, assess it, and come back to you with a more, with a more conclusive response.
So this, this page doesn't seem complete. Should we just void the page for tonight and get answers if we can come back next Monday? Or how's, what does everyone want to do on this? Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I, can we decide what we're doing? Because I.
Well, that's what I mean. I'm not happy with the page. I think we need more. We got 15,000 computers out there, and we should have more people repairing them.
Yeah, and I.
Helping out, and.
I agree, I agree with you there, but, well, can we just talk about the process? Because, I mean, you know, we're, we already were presented with the idea that we don't really need to vote anything in tonight, but then, you know, like, we had a little bit of sentiment that we do want to vote, you know, on, on lines, and we got to get together as an administration and a committee and figure out which direction we're going to go in here.
Figure out which direction we're going to go in here. Like, we do have meeting dates between now and officially when we're going to vote on the budget. So can we, can we, can we make suggestions and go through and come back?
That's what I'm saying.
All right. So are we going to vote on every page, or are we going to, you know, like, I don't think there's a need to just say, let's scrap this whole, you know, whole page right now. Let's, I'm sure, I'm sure there's a lot of markings in Dr. Boyd's book, you know, so I think that that's how the process should go, is, you know, this is, yeah, and this is where we give our input a little bit, you know, so, I don't know. I think we just need to be, you know, same focus, same, we're going to the same place. Thank you.
All right. So just, I don't know. I need some help here, too. So Senior Partners, anything, suggestions on this? Ms. Martin, I mean?
Yeah, I know.
Okay. So what was the suggestion again?
So what I, I guess what I'd say is that if we look at, you know, looking at this page as an example, we have two positions that we have questions about, that we want to get additional information on the job description. I'd make a motion to move those two positions into the suspense account for reconsideration, hopefully at our Monday meeting. In terms of the, so that would be an actionable motion. Then, in terms of the questions that you and Mr. Dillon have in regards to additional technical support, I think that can get posed as a question to the administration, and they can come back on Monday with what their recommendation is, how they feel, you know, if, their response once they get more information about what may be appropriate in that vein. But I don't think that that ties up the page.
All right. And that's what I'd like to do. So how about if we do that, if we put some questions into suspense account, and then questions that we have, like, should we have more technical help, we can come back for answers on Monday?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't mind how we do it. I just, you know, we did have our, you know, issues with this process last year, and I think Ms. Turner and Dr. Boyd should weigh in on how, you know, how it works from their side, too, because I think the way that they tend to put the budget together, that disrupts things when we go and we just start picking individual positions and putting them somewhere else, because, you know, if we're going to pull those positions out, well, a lot of consideration needs to be given to where that money is going to go, and changes things on other pages, right? So
No, it does.
How, you know, what, where's the suspense account? I mean, what's the difference between us just saying that, you know, let's get this?
Just makes us move a little quicker, so we can adopt the page and then go back to the suspense account, instead of going back to the page again. So it's just one way or the other of doing it.
Yeah, Mr. Dillon, if I could, procedurally, it'll have the same outcome.
Okay.
It's two procedural answers to the same outcome.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I guess we're just not in the same terminology, I guess.
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
I'm open to, if Ms. Turner thinks that's the cleanest way. To me, it seems like that's the cleanest way. We put aside the ones that we still need information on.
Yep.
We have additional questions about some of the others. The ones we're okay with, we move along. We don't have to revisit it, but
Okay.
I would be interested in Ms. Turner.
Sure.
I know you're interested in keeping it clean, keeping it simple, and not doing it over and over again, so.
I think it's a great idea, too, but, because I can just, it's already, it's not affecting my general fund line most of the time. But my question is this, last week, we talked about reducing the academic Chair Point Five for FISHED and making a 1.0 for athletics, and then we talked about, you know, giving money to the TV studio supply. So I made those changes, and then I uploaded it on Friday, but that was not a good idea. Well, I didn't realize that. So what I'm asking for is, like, clarity, like, when we make these changes today, do I redo the budget and upload it on Fridays for you to see it visually as part of the suspense account?
I would think, if I could take a stab at answering that, if we're making a change that we actually vote on, you could move on that. I think we were talking about, I mean, even with the TV or the academics, when we get to that page, we can have more clarification of what we're looking for, but it would require a vote, and, you know, motion with a second and a vote to actually make the change.
Okay.
That would be my understanding of it.
So then if you vote on it tonight, then I would reprint, I would upload it for Friday with all of the changes that you did vote on?
But if we're just saying we need more information, or we need more discussion, or go back to the, you know, the administrative team, you know, what do you think? Could we do more with athletics? Or could we do, you know, things like that?
Yep. Okay.
I think if I, I have maybe a little bit more help for everyone.
What?
A little bit more clarity for you. So the question is really your timeframe, Mr. Dillon. So whatever procedures you follow here, position postings, in order to actualize those for next fiscal year, you're going to have to adopt them by June, your first June meeting at the latest, because we have to go through posting, interviewing, and then ultimately appointment, which could lead someone to having to give notice in their current employment. So in order to deliver, for example, on technology, which you have a significant amount within your ESER plan, within your strategic plan, so you're going to be looking at a timeframe here. You have the benefit of time now, because we're at the beginning of May. Last year, we didn't have the benefit of time. We were going through those month-to-month budgets every single month. So so long as we make decisions that are based on analysis within a timeframe that allows us to execute, it'll all, it'll all work out in the end for, I think, the committee, as well as our role in managing the budget.
So make a motion to pull out the, the green lines, Ms., yep. So we're going to pull out, you want to add that up, Ms. Turner, 168, right?
It's your, it's your ESER account, so you should, you should be okay with the bottom line adjustment. You won't have an adjustment to your bottom line here. That's an ESER
The green lines aren't in the bottom line?
No, see right here?
On the page?
Because you're, we're voting on this general fund column here, and this is the ESER fund column. So all the ESER is just there for your information, but it's not part of this voting sheet that
And I got 850 in one of the green lines.
Yeah, but that's only, it's only highlighted because it has ESER on the final column. So that 850 is not ESER. It's still in the general fund. It's only highlighted because there's an ESER amount in this final column.
We can give you
Okay. All right.
That 850 is not the total ESER.
That 850 is the Chapter 70 portion. It just so happens that there are also clerical staff in the ESER column, so I highlighted it in green, so you knew to look. So it was just like my transparent way of saying, hey, look here.
So we still make a motion to move the ESER amounts into suspense account?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So any motion by Ms. Martin, second by Ms. D'Arney, to move the ESER accounts into suspense for right now? Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. D'Arney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas approved.
All right. And then we'll get an answer on what we think we need for support staff for next Monday.
Job descriptions and support staff on tech, I have in my notes.
Okay. All right. So the bottom line for page three is Ms. Turner?
Can I point something out real fast on this? You have on your bottom line 2604-421. I found late this afternoon that the, there was a data position that was added. I thought it was data, a data visualization tool, so I put it in the line below. So can we vote this page to be 2694, so that I can put the 90,000 in data analysts?
Okay. So what's the bottom line on page three?
2694-421.
Two, six, one more time.
2694.
Nine, four.
421.
421. Okay. All right. Everybody comfortable with that? So we need to approve page three, bottom line 2694-421. Roll call. All right. First by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. D'Arney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas approved.
Okay. Ms. Turner, page four.
So page four, the changes that you should note on this page would be the Contracted Services HR, which is a wage study. There's also $10,000 being added for recruitment expenses and software. And then you'll see an increase under the computer, Contracted Services Hardware and Software. With all of the investments we've made with technology, we have E-Rate projects that are going to begin that will increase our bandwidth and things like that, but we have to pay a 20% portion of that. It includes ASOP for the HR department, DocStar, Train and Fatex. It includes a lot of hardware replacement for, replacement parts, Apple parts, replacement scanners. And then there's a list of software that, such as our Aspen renewal, network monitoring, visitor, sex offender, software, online evaluations, et cetera, et cetera. So there's many different changes that, we had to buy Bloxy, things like that, that go along with all the technology we've purchased. So we feel as though this is a warranted increase.
Okay. And Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Certainly not a criticism, but I see internet service provider, we're spending much more money, and I can, or are we? But I just wanted info on it, actually, and what it's going to do for us, really.
That was my next one after. So that was, you know, on the previous page, when I just said add 90?
Mm-hmm.
I put it in the wrong box?
Yep.
This was where I put it. So it's actually 81.4 there. So this
Okay.
So this
But what actually are we doing with our internet upgrades?
The internet, we did go up a little bit because the firewalls, we had to buy another firewall, so that there are two firewalls and not just one. Now you have classrooms full of kids on Chromebooks, so there's more, an increase to the protection.
More protection, yeah. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Ms. D'Arney?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have major concerns with the wage study for 50,000. $50,000 is an annual salary for many people. And I know we did this study before, when we had less chiefs under the superintendent, and we had less people in HR. I would make a recommendation that we put this aside for now, and look at perhaps doing a study in conjunction with our unions, because all our salary information is public. So you poll, you know, what are they paying in Haverhill? What are they paying in Brockton? It's all on the websites. It's public information. It's not like a study that has to be done for private companies, that it's really involved. You're talking $50,000 for something that I think could be done in a week, 40 hours. So I have concern with that. I think that's a position. And I know we've done it in the past, and I think that we could find a way to do it that's not hiring some outside consultant.
Okay. Any other comments on, no, not yet.
I strongly, Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
Sorry. I'll try my video on.
Yep, there you are.
I strongly, thanks. I strongly disagree with that. I support the HR wage study and would recommend keeping it on the page. This is work that is important to make sure that our positions are paid appropriately, and making the assumption that all districts that we would be interested in studying have their information up on their websites, accessible for review, is a large assumption. I think it also takes time and energy from staff. While, when I look back at the Human Resources Department, is a very small staff to begin with. So, and I hear Ms. D'Arney say that a wage study was conducted internally years ago. I'm curious what, what was done with that information, if anything. There are experts that do this work for a living, and I think there are certain positions within our district that are not just about recruiting from other school districts. Occupational therapists, speech therapists are a great example, and we know from some prior meetings just recently, we've talked about the difficulty in recruiting and retraining some of these experts that we need. It's not just about getting them from another school district. They have many options out there and available to them, even other workers such as paraprofessionals. They're not necessarily all paraprofessionals. We're not only comparing ourselves to the wage market of paraprofessionals in other districts. Those are workers that may be employed in other spaces. It's about figuring out where we're recruiting from, and what other work they're doing that we would be competing with, and how do we keep our wages competitive so that we can attract and retain employees. So I think this is important work. I would very much support it at this time, as we are looking to, you know, recruitment and retention of employees is a major cost. And we have seen our terminations, for example, the list that we're getting, we are, we do have turnover. That's a cost. We want to be sure that we can make, we can retain employees. And it's important for us to make sure that we are competitive, and that we're offering employees, you know, quality, the right salary, and benefits. So, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. You know, I understand both perspectives on this one. As Ms. D'Arney says, we have received this information in the past in a very usable format. I mean, primarily from the committee's perspective, we've really been using it through, you know, our negotiations. So it's mainly focused on, I'd say, union positions. You know, the information is available on the DESI website. I mean, it's, so getting that, the information from the district, you know, the public school perspective is fairly, fairly, you know, easy. I am, I am, you know, I understand that we're trying to look beyond the kind of traditional, which make, which does give me pause. And I think, you know, for my purposes as one individual vote, I would be more comfortable if we had a better sense of exactly what this $50,000 was going to go for. That if there are particular nuances to specific positions, both at the higher levels, as well as perhaps in some of the mid-level positions for non-teacher positions, if I could get more information that could substantiate what this is really going to do for our district, and not just be a simple comparison of, you know, of like positions, I would be willing to consider it. So I am open to having the conversation, and I would, in my mind, it would make sense to, again, move this to suspense, and then get a, you know, get a proposal from the, the experts that do this work, that could flesh out for us exactly what our final kind of artifacts would be at the end of this process, so that we could really have a strong sense of how we, if, how we would find them useful. So, I mean, that would be my recommendation. I'd, you know, defer to my colleagues if there are other ideas.
Just as a mode of clarity, you, this would ultimately come back to you as a PTE following an RFP process, so how much would be there? We're planning, we're identifying it for the committee, that there's a cost associated with this. What we would have to do is go out to bid an RFP process, that would then come back to the committee through a permission to enter. So there are a couple more steps that would be required subsequent to the budget adoption to get you the final number, and also the final scope of work. We can provide you the RFP once it's crafted, but we would then have to see the responses to those, the proposals that are response.
Then I'd be comfortable having it as a placeholder, and then the committee needs to take action once we have the actual information. I'd be okay with that.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I certainly wouldn't be against trying to get more information of what we're actually getting, but I, I do have to agree that there's a lot of value there, and maybe having good information that could come out of this type of study. I mean, yeah, you know, we should be comparing the, every budget line to that, you know, that information. That's, that's good stuff for us to have, and, you know, for us to stay competitive. So, thank you.
So, Ms. D'Arney, sounds like we're pretty good with it as a placeholder for now, and then it'll come back to us, or you can, yeah. Yeah, we're gonna, okay. All right. So everybody comfortable with the bottom line of page four of 1,000,364,216? Need, sure, Ms. Turner?
That was the $90,000 adjustment, so it's 1,274,216.
One second. One?
274,216. And I assume that means we're not doing the 50,000 to the suspense, we're just leaving it, right?
Right, as a placeholder. Yep. Okay. Moved to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call. So bottom, bottom line is 1,000,274,216, because it had the adjustment. 1,274,216.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. D'Arney?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yays, one nay. Approved.
Okay. Page five, Ms. Turner?
So this page has, well, the changes that I will list for you include a feasibility study for universal early learning, an ELL district support position for 120,000. We added back the Coordinator of Research Test and Assessment, but that would be would be under ESER, it's green. Other ESER fund changes would be the virtual academy administrator, the director of alternative ed 12 months, and a deputy chief academic officer. Those are all listed in green. Then there is one other change that was, I was going to make, if we're going to vote on it today, I would redo the calculation at the bottom. The physical ed academic chair, it was requested that we take it out here and put it as a one full-time equivalent under athletic director. So that would change the bottom line here if we vote by 61,000.
Could you repeat that again, the last part?
Yes. So the academic chair of physical ed, last week when we spoke, it was requested that we reduce that, it was .5 here with 61,000.
Yeah.
But we, it was requested that we reduce this and show it as a full-time equivalent on the athletic director page, which would mean this page would go down by 61,000 and the athletic page would go up by 61,000. So instead of showing it as 2.5 positions, show it as one full-time athletic director.
And how are we going to resolve the phys ed chair?
That was listed as a PE lead teacher stipend to 50,000.
And how's that going to work, Mrs. Superintendent?
So that money would be, that money would be-
And how's the, like, how does the position work? Not the money, but how's the position work?
Yeah, they're one in the same. So the money would be provided over to the school site council at the high school with the charge of saying, you now need to figure out the challenge of the PE lead and evaluation. There's a couple of possibilities they could do there that are pretty easy to answer. One is they could provide release time to a current employee and hire another halftime employee. The other is they could hire a halftime employee. The other, a third option would be to use it as stipends across. I believe the high school, though, has ideas for what they're going to utilize those dollars for. We wouldn't solve it. We would allow them to solve that with that direction.
But is it just a high school position, or is it, I thought it was a district position?
No, it's like, the need would be the PE department chair responsibilities, for lack of a better word, like your other department chairs here. That would be the need that would be vacated if we moved the athletic director to a full-time athletic director. So it would be at the high school.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
I think to answer the mayor's question, it's, that person at the high school would be responsible for evaluating the staff, that the athletic director wouldn't have to do that as well, along with all of the other parts of that responsibility. So, I mean, I think it's a great idea to do, to have that separated that way. Because when it was put into place, what, 25 years ago, might, at least that?
Um, yeah, I was told today about 2003 is when it was separated that way.
I can remember when they did that changeover. I was at the high school at the time, and it was Charlie Ryan who was the guy, and he took on like everything. He was ready to take on. He probably would have been the head custodian if you asked him to do that as well. That was the kind of guy he was. But I think the reality at the time didn't actually include a heck of a lot of the evaluation that had been taking place before. And coming after that, it's just gotten so intense. It's just much more demanding. And I think, I think it's a great way to do it. I think it's been a long time coming. So I support it entirely. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My only question is, it still reads to me the same way, though. Is that change not been made on the line of the budget?
Ms. Turner?
The change was made on what I uploaded on Friday, but we took that out and went according to the section three in your budget book instead. So if, they said we have to vote on it. So if you vote on it tonight, the bottom line figure, instead of being 2.2 million, it would be 2.1 million on this page, and then we'd show the increase on the other thing.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. So, yeah, so it hasn't been swapped yet, really, but that's what we were-
It's getting confusing because I did send something on Friday that you might have seen, and that did show the change, but the, what you're looking at now doesn't.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other, so, sure, Ms. Darney?
Are we still on this page? I have-
Yeah, we're on page five.
So my concerns about the three new positions in green, I guess there's a couple of them. The very high salaries, like the virtual academy administrator at 120, that's, would be like at a principal level. So do we have a plan, or how many students are going to be in the virtual academy? I know that we have 16 teachers identified for the virtual academy. I'm just-
Yeah, that would be, we're anticipating 400 students at the secondary level. That number actually is significantly lower than what our other comparable school principals are paid. So, but yes, it would be equivalent to a school principal. And it's a school principal of a secondary school of 400 students is the forecast right now.
So comparable in terms of do we have a school comparing it to another school principal that we have of that?
Any of your comprehensive middle schools would be comparable sizes right now.
Okay. And then in terms of the, and I know we're going to be getting more information on these anyway, the job descriptions and all that, but the director of alternative education position, what, what are the schools that are going to come under that role?
So the alternative schools, we currently have the Bridge Academy, the Career Academy, also the virtual school we see as being part of our alternative school portfolio. In addition, would also be creating a student resource center, which is a re-engagement of our dropouts, which is a direct need within the district, whether we had ESER or not. And ESER provides us the opportunity to start to create that outreach in a strategic way. So you would have both, you have the student resource center, you have the current, two current alternative schools, plus the virtual school that all follow under the alternative school portfolio.
And so in developing this position, the director of alternative education, you met with and discussed, maybe not you personally, but one of your designees, with the leadership at those two schools, the Bridge and the Career Academy, to get their input in terms of what they need?
The Bridge and the Career Academy all worked through the site-based process and have been a part of the site-based process for their schools. This is around making sure that we have all of the additional support that isn't currently available within their schools. So this is additional support outside of, outside of their schools. So right now, they are currently within our overall school portfolio, meaning there's not differentiated support for alternative portfolio. They've all report up to Dr. Gilleri right now, so they're all part of the same overall school network.
I understand. So just so I'm clear, I understand what your answer was. So they worked through their school site councils on school-based decisions, but they didn't have input into a role that was going to be district-wide? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying they don't have different input than what the other, there wasn't a second focus group of those two principals for me.
But I know you've been very clear that you have communicated with, there's been over more, up to 400 stakeholders across the district, across the city who've had input. And I just want to know specifically, did these people, did leadership at the alternative schools have input in the need for a director of alternative education position and what that position would entail?
No, we haven't done that discussion around the alternative education portfolio, but they have been a part of other feedback sessions.
Okay, great, thank you. I do, obviously, these are going to the suspense account. We do need more information on these roles. And the deputy chief academic officer, and I know we'll get a job description on that, but how, tell me about that role and what that's going to do. Is that the one for the high school specifically?
No, the deputy chief academic officer, Ms. Desmond, can you share?
Sure. So that role would be in the, in my office, in the office of teaching and learning, and it would be a district-wide role, and it would support pre-K through 12 initiatives. As, as you all have said, there's been a significant amount of increases in all kinds of areas since the pandemic. And so, you know, there really is a need to continue to support our schools and, and all of the initiatives that have been increased since we have had to shift a lot of what we have been doing out of the office. So the office continues to grow, and the need is there to support all of that growth.
Okay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, Ms. Desmond, if you could use your teacher voice, my hearing aid would work less. That would be great. But the question I have is kind of about the virtual academy. And so, so let's just say a child is in that, and for whatever reason decides that this is not their cup of tea, and they want to get back into the regular classroom. What if there's no, no room left at their particular, we'll say, middle school? What happens to that child? Does that, they have to stay with the virtual?
Yeah, Ms. Superintendent?
Yeah, so that's, that's the benefit of viewing it within our alternative portfolio. So our current alternative schools are not schedules in perpetuity. They are actually transition in, transition out. So all of our, so what you're doing here, by adding the virtual school as a startup fund, you're not taking any funding away from any other school. You have two alternatives when you fund a new school. Either we can forecast the number of students funded on per student and forecast where the students are coming from. That would, that would create the challenge that you're mentioning now. Essentially, I'm taking, Andy has a seat where instead of being funded at Lowell High School, I'm taking Andy, moving him hypothetically to another school and moving the dollars with Andy. Well, we're not doing that here. Here, what you're doing is you're providing additional funding through the ESER startup funds that allow us to create the school without taking any students off of any of the other ledgers. So you're funding enough spaces for essentially 400 additional students. What that does is it provides additional funding to our current schools, uses the ESER funds to provide the startup costs, and now next year's budget, you'll be funded by the students that are currently within the school. So that allows you then to start it up without having that concern. If there's families that start a school, what we'll have is an application process, which is an application in as well as a referral in from other schools. So it won't be an opt-in, opt-out every day, but there also won't be a concern about not having a seat by the way that you're funding it. Am I answering your question clearly? We're not taking any funds away from any other school in order to fund this. It's all being funded through ESER to start it up.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Martin, and then Mr. Dillon?
Thank you. But I do think, again, as we're forecasting out, the reality of this is, is that next year, there's going to be a per pupil cost for those 400 students that comes away from the high school and comes away from the middle schools. So for this to work, again, this is one of those things where we're using ESER to begin, but there will be real repercussions for those school communities when students come out of their, their census and start being charged against, you know, where they're actually attending. So, I mean, that's just something that, that's one of the ways as we kind of go through this process, that expenses come off the ESER grant and come on to our, you know, local funds, chapter 70 funds, just because of the, you know, the way the funding following the student. So, and I know, and just to circle back a little bit for this director of alternative programming. So we're basically going to be adding a resource center director, an alternative school director, and a, I'm sorry, what was the third position?
Deputy chief academic officer?
No, no.
Parent academy.
And one for the virtual school. So it's three different positions, one of which is going to be the director of the two new ones and the two existing alternative schools.
I think you're, you're talking, what center director?
The resource center director?
Oh, no, that's, that's also, that's, the director of the alternative ed is going to be the director of the resource center.
Okay.
So the director of alternative ed will have the, will be supporting the three schools plus running the student resource center.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Mr. Dillon?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Boyd, can you just touch on, I mean, is this virtual school falling 100% under our alternative school programs? Or, I mean, we're not, we're not talking about an option for, you know, anybody jump into our virtual school next year, right?
No, so this would not be COVID-related. It's an, it's an outgrowth of what we've learned through COVID, through the COVID process, that some students, there's a small subset of students who have performed at a higher level. So the students here should be performing at a higher level virtually versus how they would perform in person. The expectation is all of our students would be in person next year, with an, with an exception of an application process and/or a referral process from the school. So-
And this can, this can help with kids that, you know, aren't in permanent living situations, maybe, and they can complete courses virtually and help them along the way?
Any student for whom a traditional school environment is not conducive to their, to their learning. It's an application process, though, that I want to make the committee aware of. We did submit the initial application process. Committee simply voting to endorse the budget doesn't necessarily mean that the state is going to endorse the school. Each school district has the opportunity to submit this type of application. We feel confident in our application, but I just want to make sure that the committee is aware that this will require a separate approval. So this is not intended to be the scenario that you're experiencing right now through COVID, where due to a safety requirement, kids are learning remotely. This is setting up an alternative school where a kid safely can learn in person. However, their learning style or their needs, their individual needs necessitate that a remote environment would provide something better and better performance for them.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this page? Ms. Darney?
Just a request, when we get the, more information about the deputy chief academic officer role, if we could get maybe an org chart of that department and who's on the team and who's providing direct services to kids. It seems like we're getting a lot of administrative roles in these new positions, and it makes me a little nervous. I'm more focused on the frontline people who are providing the services for kids, because I think that's where we, we've needed. We have the loss from the pandemic. Thanks.
I'm with you. If it helps, though, just remember, we're significantly expanding summer school. We've significantly expanded technology across the district. We're extending the school day next year. All of that work, as well as an additional school, all falls within our academic office. So the analysis here is that we're extending beyond 24 hours of reasonable work expectations for people within the teaching and learning office. So in order to do that additional work, we've got to supplement it accordingly. Also to note, the deputy chief academic officer is slighted below the pay grade of principals within the district. Typically, you would expect principal experience. But given the feedback that I've heard from the committee and others, we slotted it at a pay grade lower, so we're having to go through that analysis.
Thank you. So one other question, Mr. Superintendent. What's, so on this page, we have director of curriculum and instruction, which used to be at Lowell High, and then the next page, we're going to have associate head of schools. So how do those roles differ in your, in-
I'm not, I'm not sure of the line item, but I have been asked that question before. So one thing to, the director of curriculum and instruction did not have the flexibility to evaluate, nor did it have the flexibility to be involved in collective bargaining and confidential discussions across. So what you didn't have previously was redundancy at the high school for the principalship. You didn't have any position that if for some reason, and we learned here this year, you know, having experienced it myself, you could be quarantined at any given time. And, you know, those kind of things can occur at any given time. And at the high school, 3,200 students, that type of redundancy in leadership, if it was required for an extended period of time, the director of curriculum instruction, as described, wouldn't allow that to occur. So here, what you get with what we're working to provide is not a loss of benefit, but essentially added benefit and added value within one position, so you don't have to create multiples. And that need of executive level leadership for a 3,200 school was, was seen as necessary. And that's, that's the biggest difference between the director versus an associate head of school. Greater similarity with the current head of schools job description versus the current CNI position.
So is the director of, the associate head of school, they're going to be helping out with curriculum and instruction?
We view that as an instructional leader within the building. Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Everybody good with this page? Ms. Clark, everybody's good?
Thank you. I, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just, I just want to say that I will, I understand it's been suggested to remove these positions and put them into suspense. I believe I support all of the positions and the dollars associated with them listed on this page. So, because certainly if we're opening a new school, we need someone to, to run it. I think the description, the high-level description of what the alternative education director will do makes total sense to me. And also the, I definitely see the need for the deputy chief academic officer with all of the additional, additional work that's been happening in that space with more to come. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Turner?
Do you need the amount for that page?
Well, first, we're going to do the motion to put the green lines in suspense. So motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota, to put the, just to make it easier, the green items in suspense. So, roll call. So putting these green, Ms. Martin and Mr.- So, putting these green, um, Ms. Martin and Mr. Dakota.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clock?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, motion passes.
All right, and then the bottom line for page five, Ms. Turner? 147?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, bottom, so we need a motion to accept the bottom line of $2,164,147. Got it?
Yep.
Motion by Ms. Darney, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clock?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas, approved.
Okay. Uh, page six, Ms. Turner?
On this, um, page, we have one decrease of an Assistant Principal, which is simply because of a turnaround grant funding it. Um, and then the second change on this page is the Associate Head of School increase. The Associate Head...
Darney?
No. You mean the first line? No.
I have just a question. You called to me? Sorry.
Yeah, Diana, a question.
Should the Associate Head of School be one of those new positions that's in green?
No, because this is what I meant when I said that there were 90 positions. So, if we wrote a grant application with every single one of the new positions, the narrative would be ridiculously long. So, instead, we're going to fund the social workers on the ESAR grant. So, um, this was picked during the process of fair student funding, when the high school got additional funds, but it's not being, it's not being put on the ESAR application.
But is it a new position?
It's a new...
That we have to see a job descrip...
Yes. Oh, yeah. Oh, so you mean, is it going to go into a suspense account? Oh, yes. It, it could go into suspense if you wanted to, but it's not, um, it's not pot, green, because green only indicated it's part of ESAR.
You received this job description, though, previously. If you recall, Mr. Fiatto came and presented at a school committee meeting, and that was part of the report. Within your packet was a draft job description for this position, which he spoke to and answered the committee's questions at that time. So, it's a little bit different.
So, we have seen a job description for it?
You have.
Okay.
You haven't, you haven't approved it? You haven't approved the permission to post, but you have seen the draft job description?
So, why not include it with the other job descriptions? It's a new role and...
We can.
Okay.
That's helpful.
I mean, I think that keeps it cleaner, right?
So, do you want it in suspense? Yeah?
Yeah, I might as well.
Why, can I ask, why are we putting things in suspense when we are, we are supposed to be analyzing this, this budget and making decisions or, you know, suggestions? But if what I just heard is this is a position that was requested from the Fair Student Funding, uh, QIP program that, that, that was provided by the high school from their school site council, why are we, why are we pushing, why are we now moving this to another place? I, I don't understand exactly.
Well, it's just, it's just one opinion, and tonight, we're saying that we want to see job descriptions on all new positions, and we don't have those in hand, so...
But are we not putting the cart before the horse with these job descriptions? I mean, I believe Dr. Hall and his staff have worked all weekend long to provide job descriptions, and I appreciate the effort, but we, I very much appreciate the effort. But those are not something that we want to rush either, and the idea of, of why, what this position is serving for is the work that they're doing exists and has been brought forward by the school itself to say, this is a need that we have. We've identified that this is how we would like to spend the money that has been allotted to us for, and, and, and they're looking for, of course, they need our approval for that, but just because a position is new and we, we, ah, the suspense account, I feel, is, is becoming just a bucket for everything new, when, when, in fact, I thought that was more of a place where we can do some further analysis.
Well, I could go either way on this, because we did have a discussion with Mr. Fiatto, but do you have any other questions, Ms. Darney?
I don't feel strongly about not putting it in the suspense account, but I do feel that it is our job to review the job description. So, that's why I thought it made sense to include it with all the other new positions where we're going to be approving new job descriptions. That's all.
All right. Ms. Martin?
You know, I, I would agree. I mean, I think that, that we've had a preliminary proposal, but it hasn't been presented to us in its final form. Um, I think for every new position, this committee needs to vote before it can be posted. We can't vote to post it until we have it. So, I think, you know, in terms of, uh, kind of our process, it makes the most sense to treat this position like the other new positions, put it into suspense, and then, as we get more information on each one of these new positions, and if that's tomorrow, or if it's next week, or if it takes three weeks, fine, we've still been able to move forward with our budget, put these, you know, put these funds aside, knowing that that's kind of our intention, but then we can pull about when they are fully fleshed out and when this committee can make a, a well-informed decision about each one of these, these job descriptions.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just wanted to point out, I, I do feel this position itself is slightly different because we have had, um, you know, we've had recent talks on it and, but, I don't know, I guess, um, however, we're, we're going to do it. This, this one does just seem different than anything else, because we have been kind of analyzing it and we, we had talks about it, but, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I mean, either way, we're going to, I'd see it by next Monday anyway, so, you're all set, Mr. Dakota? All right. So, that's the only question on this page by everybody, basically? All right. So, you need a motion to put the Associate Head of School position into sus, sus, suspense account by Ms. Darney, seconded by Ms. Martin? Roll call.
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clock?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, motion passes.
All right. So, Ms. Turner, the bottom line is, what, we're going to take out that 130 for now?
Yes. So, it's 8464723.
Okay. 8464723.
Yes.
Is that that? All right. So, motion to approve this line by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Um, page six of 8,464723. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clock?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one nay, motion passes.
Uh, let's see, page seven, Ms. Turner?
So, seven has a lot of information on it. The things that I would point out is that, um, there's a net of eight additional teachers. That includes nine additional teachers that were in the interventionist and Looper area, but then we reduced by three district band teachers, and then we add it two pre-K classes at the end. So, the two pre-K classes were added, not using the fair student funding. It was added as an, an initiative that we wanted to expand as part of the strategic plan. Um, there are 16 virtual academy teachers that are not included in that eight net, because it's part of the ESAR column. And I also wanted to point out, this is another one of the pages that I had changed when I sent something on Friday, that down at the bottom, we can vote, if you want me to, to add 83,800 under, I'm, I'm sorry, um, yes, it's, oh, no, it's not this page, it's the next one, sorry. Yeah, so, right now, the other thing that I just pointed out was the district band teacher reduction. So, overall, it's a net of eight teachers. And just so you know, going through the fair student funding process, they would, they may reduce how many, um, like a teacher, if they, a seventh-grade teacher, and call it an interventionist. So, it's just really a renaming of teachers.
To the, and to remind the committee, the reduction of teachers is actually a redesign of programming by our new, uh, Arts Director. So, our new Arts Chair has a redesign of programming, uh, that's fairly exciting, that'll work better, I believe, for our young people, so we're better serving young people. We believe we'll be serving more young people at the same cost by reframing those dollars. Uh, at a subsequent committee meeting, um, depending on the length of our agendas, uh, Mr. Viza will be in to provide for the committee ahead of next year. You'll get a, a full share out of what that programming will look like for our students.
Okay. Questions on this page? Ms. Darney?
I thank you, and I do have questions on this page. I know we had talked about, um, supplies for the, uh, TV studio. I'm not seeing, there's not going to be a, a recommendation to change staffing, because we lost so many staff members, and it doesn't look like we're putting anybody back. Um, is that right? We're not, there's no, it just seems like we had this great TV studio, and the kids were engaged, and we, we had a number of cuts...
We don't have a recommendation.
During some tough years, so...
We don't have a recommendation right now. If you'd like us to assess and analyze that, I'll take that, take that note and give back a further assessment to the committee.
I mean, I think in the world we're living now, you know, the communications piece, using the technology, getting the kids engaged, and, you know, I, I don't know if they're still even able to do it with how that staff was decimated. Uh, I think they went from three to one, and Mr. Dakota might know this better than me, but we used to have, um, the kids would do their own news show in the morning that would be broadcast throughout the high school. I mean, I don't know if they've been able to keep any of that up. It's just a lost opportunity, um, for our students. So, I'm open to having you guys take a look and see if there's a way to start to rebuild that studio more than just supplies, but that's just a kind of, I just really appreciated the work and, and what the oper... Not only that, they would go out to our schools when we had in-person schools, and they would, you know, The Wayang did a, um, a theater production, you know, and they'd be shooting that, putting that on our Channel 22 TV, you know, just a lot of these things that I think brought the schools together and highlighted the good work that we were doing across the district. So, I, I would love to be able to bring some of those positions back. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. And I, you know, to add on to that, because I do think the sta, staffing is obviously critical, but this is obvi, also an area where we can make capital investments with one-time dollars, one-time ESAR dollars, that we could bring the, the studio back up to the level it should be, in, in terms of the technology and the, the capacity that it has for our students, really, to be able to access that with the staff support, which is always critical to the, the program's success. But, you know, it really, we can look back and see, you know, football games that were called by high school students, you know, and you were able to watch that on TV. We had specialty programming for, where our teachers were kind of offering, uh, learning opportunities to parents at home. I mean, it's the kind of thing that could fold very nicely into the, the, um, parent leadership, um, initiative that's going to be putting in, we're going to be putting in place, so that, you know, that, that one part of our, the high school, the, the, the studio, really does serve certainly the entire district, and more profoundly, I'd say, the entire community. So, if we could go back and see if there are, uh, options for investments we can make that will have a long-term impact, um, both including a, a staffing component as well as, um, if there are any capital investments that we might, that might be recommended to us.
If I could, Mr. Mayor, because it provides a good question, although I heard it as a statement, it's a good question for me to respond to, to give the, to remind the committee. You have $15 million identified for eligible facility upgrades, uh, through ESAR III. Those dollars are available to the committee. What we know would be eligible dollars, and we're still waiting on the final guidelines from ESAR III at this point, but what we know to be eligible would be technology, would be air quality. So, additional investment, certainly a TV studio, is around technology. So, those, that money has already been, has been recommended to you as money that would be set aside for facility upgrades that would further work through the Facility Subcommittee and in conjunction and collaboration with the city. So, just want to remind the committee, you have those dollars designated already. That requires a full bid process as well as a full vetting process by what we would recommend the Facility Subcommittee first, prior to the committee. Uh, $15 million is obviously sizable and significant, and we would expect that type of thing to be eligible through ESAR, um, as it relates to technology and communications.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota and then Mr. Dillon?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Having seen firsthand the, the wonderful work that the TV studio has done over the years while I was at the high school, uh, remarkable work and, and done in, in short order, by the way. Uh, sometimes they had to come in very early, teachers would have to come in early, in order to get production things ready, uh, for the news program that you were referring to, Ms. Darney. So, I, I know that the people that we have working there currently, they're doing above and beyond what really should be expected of them, and I think getting, uh, more people on board would certainly help that. And I, I, I get that with the renovation, uh, of the high school, that, you know, how much money do we want to invest in the current studio, knowing that the new studio is going to be coming online and, and would be, would be, would the equipment upgrade be useful and transferable to the new studio? Possibly, and we'd have to look into that to make sure that that's money well spent. Uh, but I think, overall, everything has to be upgraded on that studio. I mean, when you're talking some, some of that equipment, it, any of that equipment, uh, after five years, is dated equipment, and, and it's almost useless by, by the current standards. So, you need, you need to look at, at a, a working budget that would be addressing those issues as well going forward, not just having to say, year after year, oh, yeah, we, we do need to have this upgraded, or this has to be changed, or this has to be upgraded here as well. So, I think we need to be, keep that, uh, as part of the working part of that studio, and I, I, I'm sure that, uh, they could come, come up with an extremely long list of things that would need to be done yesterday, uh, but I think if, if, as long as we're looking at this and we're trying to figure out, do we need more staff? Absolutely, we could use more staff, because then you could have more students availing themselves of the wonderful technology that's in that studio, quite frankly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota. It's on page fifteen.
Excuse me, just, Mr. Dillon, then you can jump in.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
That's all right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to echo a few of the same comments, um, and just, um, it'll make everybody aware that they, they are doing actually a lot for what they have, uh, available to them right now, um, and they are producing a lot of content. I see new videos out all the time with, uh, Mr. Fiatto. He, he's doing weekly updates, and so they, they are doing a lot. Um, and then, I just wanted to mention, yeah, I, I think we should be teaching kids to produce video content as much as possible, um, but we get, we do have to take into consideration the construction that is going on and, you know, make sure those upgrades go well. But it, and it's also great to hear that part of those dollars can, it could be used that way, so, thank you.
Sure, thank you. Um, I'll look to Superintendent go and then you, Ms. Turner. Everybody's got their hands up.
Yes. Um, so, I, I just wanted to let you know that the city did do a three-year, um, capital plan with the TV studio, and so we're in year two of that. What I sent to you on Friday showed a year-two lawn, not a laundry list, but a wish list that they did get everything from, and, and it included, uh, year three for next year, $75,000. So, what I sent on Friday, when I thought I could update the budget, was, um, that $75,000 listed on page 10, which is where the TV, TV studio supplies are listed. But, um, until, when we do a vote, if you want me to, I can add that for the next iteration of the budget.
The other item that I was just going to identify for the committee, page 15 is where you see the facility upgrade dollars. We have them listed right now as district-wide HVAC investments because we know that those are eligible investments through ESER. So what we would anticipate is that the school committee would go through its prioritized list of eligible expenditures. We can, we also know, as you can see through other investments, that technology is also eligible through ESER. But I just wanted to identify for the committee, this is in no way line item breakdown of $15 million. This is putting a fund for the committee to make determinations about facility upgrades that are eligible, and we just happen to know that air quality is a prioritized allowable expenditure through ESER, which is why you have it highlighted that way. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. All right, so I had a couple of questions, so through you to the Superintendent or Ms. Turner. How many people are actually in the TV studio, then?
Two. Two.
Sure, Ms. Turner.
A video production teacher and a digital media producer.
And they're both on grant?
Yes, and both of them are on PEG.
So the only one we're not doing is the digital media producer?
No, that's the one we actually have. It's the one above it.
Schedule, what was the TV associate producer's schedule?
Yes.
That's the only one we're not doing?
Right.
I have a note to analyze that, Mr. Mayor, so we'll conduct an analysis of that position.
All right. I mean, that TV studio is so vital to the high school that, you know, and we, as a city, we really value that. So if you can come back with a recommendation Monday to see if we could fund, fully fund it, it would be appreciated.
Yes, we'll do. What I have to do, the analysis I want to undertake is the decisions that were made through the site-based budgeting process at the high school. The high school received significant dollars last fiscal year as well as this fiscal year, and we didn't see that recommendation come from the high school. Over a million dollars of additional investment in the high school. So that's the analysis. I want to understand how that decision was made prior to providing supplemental positions at the high school. That's a nearly $30 million investment that we have in, over at the high school with the large size of that budget. It's the largest budget we've got.
Okay. All right. It's you or Ms. Doherty?
I completely understand where you're coming from. The high school had increased money to work with as they needed to. I do think that the TV studio serves a district-wide, community-wide role that maybe would allow a different look at it, more from a district-wide perspective. But, point made. I understand that that was not a priority for the high school, or they would have brought it forward. Is that what you?
That's the analysis I would at least like to engage in before providing a recommendation to the committee.
All right. But the only thing I don't understand is, I mean, I know we've had a lot of change over there, and that is just a real vital part of the high school. So I don't know why it got, seems to have gotten missed, but it needs to be addressed.
We'll look into it.
Okay. So on page seven, we've got a motion to put in the suspense account. What's the line on that, Ms. Turner? One, five, six, zero? One million? What's going in the suspense?
So on the, the only green line on there would be the 16 teachers for the virtual academy, which are not, that's not included under your general fund account. So we wouldn't have to change the amount, even though we can move the 16 teachers to suspense if you want. It would just be another ESER move.
Yeah, I mean, we're on a, we're going to stay, continue with our. So, motion to put in suspense the 16 teachers by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
I'm sorry, can I just clarify? Are we keeping them consistent with the virtual administrator position? Did we also move that over? Okay, I was just making sure that they were staying together and we weren't, you know. Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mia Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Sorry, I also need to clarify, because this is, the 16 are only virtual schools, so what about the 11 that are in the general fund? Are those also virtual academy?
No, so the 11 are actual interventionist loopers, and that's all with Chapter 70 money. It just happens to be green because the ESER, it's a line that ESER has touched. You know, you have the 16 teachers.
Okay, so the, but the 16 are the teachers attached to the virtual school, virtual academy?
Right.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six sheyes, motion approved.
All right, so page seven doesn't change then, Ms. Turner? Still 98, 262, 488?
Yes.
Okay. So I need a motion to accept the bottom line of page seven, 98, 262, 488, by Mr. Dillon, seconded by, we'll give you one, Ms. Clark. Seconded by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mia Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six sheyes approved.
Ms. Turner, page eight?
Okay, so page eight, we actually have an additional occupational therapist, a reduction of a certified occupational therapist assistant. We have two additional speech therapists. We have an additional ETC, 20 additional paras, which is a total of 24 extra positions on this page. And the other thing to point out are the two green highlighted rows, which are ESER-funded items. One would be a Twilight program, an after-school program, and the second one is the district-wide summer program. And as you've seen in previous presentations, these programs, we're investing far more. This is just this annual cost for this year. So it's 1.7 each year and $700,000 each year for the summer program.
As a, as a point of clarity for the committee, your timeline is slightly different here, whereas you've got the benefit of time as we're approving things that wouldn't even be implemented till July 1. While you've got a July 1 horizon, this is on the grant. The grant has, this is, we're utilizing ESER II for this year's summer program, and the summer program, we've already got positions posted with anticipation of, because we have to. So if there's a question about the expansion of summer program, we would want to be able to answer those for you this evening if we could, given the fact that we're taking votes.
It's hard to understand with your mask. Could you say that one more time?
All right, so you have both ESER II and ESER III. As Ms. Turner was explaining, you're crossing three full years. The first summer year, you're actually going to start that this summer. So you have a line here at 700. I just didn't want the committee to identify, because it's green, that it falls in the same timeline. The summer program, if you have additional information that you're looking for tonight, given that you're taking votes, Ms. Desmond can provide you any bit of detail that you want on the summer program here tonight.
Okay. Mr. Dillon first, and then we'll go.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I did just want to advocate for the Twilight program, because I think that is great for our kids. I think the need for some sort of vocational education is outgrowing our tech schools. And so I'm glad that that's something that we can get in there under ESER. And also the summer program, I mean, anything that is, you know, any dollars that are going to get our, getting our kids together and with, with teachers is, I think, good money spent, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
I think, you know, I also think this is really the way we need to be going, to try to make up for the gaps our kids have had and just the isolation, to have an expanded summer program. So I just have a couple of questions. Do these account for facility upgrades, like having tents or outdoor spaces for the after-school program? This is just for staffing?
Staff and supplies.
And are we going to offer summer school at every site? Is that the plan? Or every school will have an opportunity to participate? Will it be by recommendation of this school leadership? Or can parents say, I want my child to participate? Are there going to be limitations on the children that can participate in the summer programs?
Both and. We actually think we're going to need to do continuous recruitment of students to access these programs. We've utilized right now an anticipation, a forecasted anticipation of 30% of our population year one, 40%, 50%, which we believe to be aggressive targets. There is space for any parent who wants to and any student who needs to, meaning a referral to or an application to. And we can adjust, really, just simply based on staffing. We do anticipate that the challenge here will not be our desire to provide, but rather the accessibility and access to staffing. It's been a challenging year, and every school district is going to be expanding out their summer programming. Oftentimes, we need to supplement our staffing with additional staff, meaning we go to our staff first and say, are you interested in these positions? And then we'll end up going external. If you remember, last year, for instance, we had the discussion about, I want to say it was speech-language pathology that we had to go external to for our summer program. So that's what we think to be the concern. If we have available staff and available desire within, we can adjust these numbers based on our current grant allocation.
And then, so when you say 30%, you're targeting 30% of our students for this summer. How does that compare to populations in previous summers?
Ms. Desmond, can you provide greater specifics on that?
So I just want to clarify that the dollar amounts here are to supplement what we already receive for 21st Century funding. So just to be clear, because it looks like a small dollar amount when you think about, right, the number of students that we have within our district. But again, this would only fund the sites that don't already have 21st Century. So that's why that dollar amount seems relatively small. So what we built into, and this, this work was done with myself and Carolyn Rochelo, who many of you know runs our 21st Century programming already. So she, her expertise was utilized to come up with these numbers. But what we are funding, site administrator, teachers, so that we have a 15 to 1 student ratio, which is much smaller than what we would provide during the school year, so that we're sure our students are getting that individual attention. Coaches to support curriculum within these programs, paraprofessionals, school clerk, a nurse on site, and social worker support, because we do know that SEL is going to be really important this summer to support our students. The projection, projection of 30% as Dr. Boyd mentioned is higher than what we serviced in the past. But last year, as you remember, we increased our summer programming significantly. We're going to increase it more, even with this 30%, with the ultimate goal of using the ESER funds for three years to get up to at least 50% again, at the sites that are not 21st Century sites.
So what was the percentage last summer? You said it was higher than usual, do you know?
We serviced 3,000 students last year, which was quite an increase from the year prior.
About 25%, 20%? Are we, and then I'll just ask one more thing about, are we going to have physical activities built into the program too?
Yes.
To run, jump, play ball, things like that?
Yes, so we will have more of an academic focus than, our 21st Century programming is typically very experiential. And so we will actually, in these, in this, this summer's program, really be looking at our student assessment data at the end of the school year and be able to develop. We actually have our academic coaches that are going to work to develop curriculum that really targets and helps to intervene where maybe there has been some loss. And then built into the program, we will provide physical activity as well, as well as experiential learning. We don't want to get completely away from that, because we want students to feel engaged and excited about being in our summer program. What we also have done is we've collaborated with our community partners. So as you know, summer school is a shorter day, and so what we are doing is collaborating with our community partners so that if students want to stay beyond the summer school, school day, they will be able to either extend their learning at the recreational sites across the city or with, with Boys and Girls Club, or YMCA, or some of our other community partners, so that they, the activities that occur after hours would be also experiential and engaging activities for our students.
Excellent. Two last questions. Are we going to offer transportation?
Yes, so, yes, so in this budget, we, we budgeted for transportation. We do not want transportation to be a barrier for our students to be able to attend.
Do we need to vote on this tonight? I know you said it was a different timeline. Should this, should these items not be put in the suspense account? Because you need us to move forward so that you can be ready for the summer?
I'm suggesting that that would be helpful, being the fact that you're already taking votes. If you want to wait till the 19th, but it's not something, whereas the others were waiting till July 1, this is getting forward and launched right now.
I would be comfortable doing that. I do obviously want a full report when you've got all the details worked out, but I think this is an excellent opportunity for our kids. I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. Really just echoing, because I do think that, I agree. I think we can be very comfortable moving, moving this forward tonight. So I think that's great. And I would say I do look forward, I know we always get a kind of pre-summer school report from your office, Ms. Desmond, and Ms. Rochelo. So really looking forward to seeing what we'll be able to do with this more kind of rigorous programming over the course of the summer. And again, kudos for keeping the experiential, which of course translates into the fun part of summer school. So glad to see that that's still there. Thank you.
Any other questions on this page?
We could just motion to approve the bottom line. I would do that.
Second.
Do you have a question, Ms. Clark?
Nope, I'm just seconding, seconding that motion.
All right. I just have a quick question before we approve it. So motion by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Clark. Mr. Superintendent, when we have, on the next page, we're getting into ESER money, supporting teachers to improve classroom practice, $3 million. When we go on this page, page eight, we have paraprofessionals, regular education, and we did go up by, what did we go up? 14, 15 positions for paras?
20.
What's that?
20.
20?
Mm-hmm.
I get 186 and then 201.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at both the special ed and the regular.
All right, yeah. So my question would be, over the next three years, should we be utilizing more paras in the classroom to catch the kids up?
Yeah, we think we've balanced it, we think we've balanced it, because the next line that you were referring to, that's professional development building capacity, which will be sustainable and allow us to sustain the work beyond any kind of grant. You also have, do have increases within paraprofessionals and tutors as well. So you have increases across. We think it's necessary, and we think that the current recommendation balances all of the needs within that prioritized list or prioritized plan. So the, the supporting teachers to improve classroom practice is the professional development add and recommendation. That's the cost of the professional development. The paras and such are built within the other line items. So you have both built within, Mr. Mayor, and we think we have it balanced as a recommendation.
So, not to jump ahead, but on the next page, that $3 million, is that one year's of, one year professional development?
Ms. Turner, do you want to provide a?
The $3.2 million, that's ESER funding, and it includes the six additional, additional half-days, which would equate to over, I think it was, no, it would equate to six additional days if you add, three additional days if you add the six half-days, plus one hour a day, a week with professional development. So it's actually both endeavors. Is that your question, like, is it?
He's saying you're only accounting for one year here within this budget, but we have planned for three years.
Right, yes. It is for the, that $3.2 million is for one year.
So it allows you to do two things, Mr. Mayor, as Ms. Turner was saying with those dollars. We've now, we're providing those dollars outside of, we're providing the PD outside of school time, so we've increased it, which then also allows you to increase the instructional day. But the simple answer is yes, that's for the one-year cost for doing both of those things.
So just educate me. I'd rather see more paras in the classroom. What are we going to, and, you know, and I'm not, I just don't know, so I'm asking. What are we going to teach an hour a week to the teachers to provide better instruction? It seems to me like they're already doing a great job, so how much more an hour a week can we pay them? I'd rather see more people in the classroom helping them so we can give more personal. It seems over the next three years, these kids are going to need more personal attention to catch up than providing the teachers an hour a week. So just kind of help me with that.
It's a worthwhile debate. I think, we think we have it balanced in the appropriate way here. Remember, for every position that we add, we've got to hire someone. We believe we've added the amount of positions that we feel confident we can actually get staffed. It's going to be a task in front of us to staff all of the positions. In addition, beyond that, there is a need to make sure that we train all of our staff, continuous learning. Every bit of literature you see on school improvement, that's the kind of one common theme across, that improving teacher quality is going to lead to improved student outcomes. We now are entering a new arena. Next year is going to be a whole nother new arena. Now, what we've done here is you currently have, as a school committee, built within the calendar, six half-days of professional development. We've shifted those out to increase learning time, because there's going to need to be increased learning time for our students. The reason you previously did that as a committee is because it's cheaper. You were, you were cost-constrained. Professional development is necessary. So the way to adjust for that is you created half-days within the calendar. Students are released, teachers stay, no added cost. You can provide those half-days of professional development. Well, now you have dollars. So what it allows us to do is we've, we are So what it allows us to do is we've, we are going to be bringing back to you a recommended school calendar with those half-days removed from the school calendar, so those become full days. So you've essentially created each year, three more full days of learning time. So kids have more learning time, six half-days equates to three full days. Then you take that PD time and move it to after-school, as well as additional days. So you have two PD days, full days, as well as one hour per week. We're going to, we plan to utilize that, I'm sorry?
You're not talking about one hour a week, are you talking one hour a month?
No, one hour a week.
One hour a week?
One hour a week. So you actually will add up being additional, over the three years, additional 100 hours of professional learning time. So what, so you'll have significantly more learning time for our teachers. We'll be utilizing several things. You heard the culturally and linguistically sustaining practices plan that we presented last meeting. In addition to, we're planning to implement a collaborative coaching and learning model, which you've had historically in the district and some of your turnaround schools historically, but unfortunately, it is non-existent right now from a strategic direction standpoint. So we'd be reinvesting in that collaborative coaching and learning. Collaborative coaching and learning allows us to identify school-based problems of practice and be able to support staff around those school-based problems of practice. Schools identify those within the quality improvement plan, so we can help and support them through that. So then they end up with four hours of PD each month, as opposed to three hours every half-day. That's how that one hour a week works out. And then you additionally, we have two days that, full days of PD, because we know next year is going to be a new year as well. And then we'll build out those, that training time as well for teachers. And we'll build out a calendar for you. So we think we have it balanced, Mr. Mayor, according to what we know works for school improvement. It is also, does invest in additional positions, as well as additional PD, as well as additional learning time for kids. Because remember, your extended school day and summer school is not all students. The additional three days will be for all students. So over three years, here's the math. Three years, you'll have nine additional days added into the school calendar. We lost 10 days this past year, if you recall. It was only 170-day year versus 180-day, and that was the math calculation there.
Okay, thank you. So first, I need a motion to move to the suspense account, the $3,400, right? Is that correct, the green? On page eight?
The 3 million was, the 3 million that you're referring to is actually on page nine?
No, no, on page, we're on page eight, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so the green amounts?
Not move that to the suspense account, because it was, it had to do with the extended summer school.
Oh, all right.
And we kept it separate from all the positions.
Okay, all right, so just going to vote on the bottom line?
We voted on the bottom line?
Huh?
We haven't voted on the bottom line for page eight, and then we're on to page nine.
All right, so bottom line at $21,869,839, so roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six A's approved.
Okay, page nine, Ms. Turner?
So page nine has areas in green that are ESSER-funded, the CLSP coordinator, three academic coaches, three data inquiry facilitators, and the ESSER professional development of $3.2 million. In addition to those ESSER-funded positions, we also had a reduction in math resource teachers. That was based on Fair Student Funding. One of the schools gave up a math resource teacher in, in exchange for something else, so.
All right, Ms. Darney?
Thank you. Regarding the, the professional development line of $3.2 million, how much of that is just paying for the time? Or is it all paying for the time for the teachers? The half-days, that they're now going to work a full day of school and then have professional development afterwards? Does that 3.23 only cover the staff costs?
Yes, that's correct, Ms. Turner, right?
So it, so 3.2 million is just buying us our staff? And, and I do see there's great value, think about those half-days, right? Six half-days that are now going to go away. And, and in terms of staff staying after for an hour, is that going to be required? Or is it going to be voluntary, or is that something that we are going to need to negotiate?
The third choice there, we're going to need to negotiate.
We're going to need to negotiate, okay.
Your current collective bargaining agreement allows you to implement it on a voluntary basis. If you, to negotiate it, we would have to negotiate it to make it mandatory, and we're currently engaged in those negotiations.
And then in terms of the actual structure of the time, is that going to be driven by each school? Or is there going to be leadership from the district to make sure that we do make the best use of? I mean, I think for teachers, if they feel like the hour is well-spent, they're obviously going to be more apt to want to go.
It's both and, with where, both and, so school-based and centrally-driven. We're currently working through with negotiations on whether it's mandatory or voluntary. Obviously, that would change it significantly. But also here, what won't be, is you have also built within, is building out the process by which professional learning will occur at the school. So all of our Renaissance schools will then be working in conjunction with Ms. Desmond's office around a collaborative coaching and learning model, which is collaborative professional development, where our coaches, our school-based coaches, are working directly with our teachers collaboratively around the school-based problem of practice. Then you also have some centrally-directed professional learning, which will be around the use of data, the, around the use of the new technology in the classroom, and also around the CLSP planning process. So it's a both and, with significant support around our highest need schools, which are Renaissance schools. And you see that within, if you look up at the top of the page, you see the additional positions that'll be supporting that process.
The academic coaches?
Academic coaches, data inquiry facilitators, and the CLSP coordinator.
I think that the Renaissance schools and the work we do collaboratively around that is a good role model of best practice to spread out through the whole district, because I know that process is very, you know, it's scripted, it is a plan, everybody know what's supposed to happen. So I think that, that's a good model to look at for moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Dillon, did you add your hand up, or Mr. Dakota, somebody, okay. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The whole concept of adding time to the day, or the week, or however you're going to be approaching that, we have to approach that very cautiously. I, I've, people have asked me over the years, why can't we extend the day by this amount of time? And I, and I'm, having been in the trenches for, we'll just say a long time, by that last class or that last period, regardless of whether at the elementary school, whether at the middle school or high school, the kids are toast. So what would, what would, if we're extending that day a little bit, how much advantage are we going to be getting from that? That's just a question that doesn't need an answer, I'm just throwing that out there. So we need to really approach that very cautiously, that, what we are expecting from our staff and, and however we negotiate with them. But on this page nine, the CLSP coordinator, that we have not approved this whole program at all, and we have not, so is that, can that be put into the suspense accounted for now? Because we have.
You have, you have time, you have time on that like you have time on the other positions. So again, we publicized for the community that we would anticipate school committee adoption on May 19. So everything you're approving tonight is basically accelerating your agenda. So the only thing I pointed out was the summer school and so on, so we can get a head start on that. The other thing though, Mr. Dakota, I do want to, your first question I can answer right now, because it is feedback we've gotten through this process, which led us in the direction of adding the school time by eliminating the half-days. So that roots, so you have no obligation within your school calendar to adjust the start time or end time of a school day or the school year. Yet at the same time, with this plan, you can account for the equivalent of nine additional days over the course of your three-year ESSER plan. And you do that by eliminating the need for the six half-days each year over, over the three years. And we believe that actually is a win in both directions. It's more school time without, without leading to the concerns that you shared, which were shared with others through our feedback gathering. And I think this, this proposal here is the result of a lot of people's feedback in that direction.
All set?
So do we need to make a motion to put that into the suspense account?
The green items, yep. Mr. Dillon, question? Or now, put it into suspense? Yep.
Yeah, I thought we were making a motion there.
Yep, okay. So I need a motion to put the, we need a figure for the green ESSER items to move into suspense by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Do you have a bottom line for that?
Oh, the bottom line stays the same on the page, because we're going over the general fund. I'll move all of these to the ESSER suspense. Bottom line, I'm sorry, the bottom line is $2,983,95.
Yeah, but I want a bottom line. So how do you get 2 million when we have 3 million at the bottom again?
Because we're still going over just the general fund column. Do you want me to give you the ESSER amount?
Yeah, we're doing the ESSER account first.
Okay, because the bottom line to the page is the $2,98, but I'll give you a ESSER amount.
Right, that's what we do first, yeah. So we're going to add the 1, 3, 270, and the 3,236, right?
Yes. So for ESSER, it would be 3, 3,906,682.
Okay, 3,900?
3,906,682.
You have it? All right, so we got that motion, right? Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Park?
No.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five days, one day, motion passed.
All right, now I need a motion to accept the bottom line by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Darney. Bottom line of 2,983,95. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six A's approved.
Page 10, Ms. Turner?
Page 10. Page 10 has an increase of $500,000 on supplies and textbooks. That was because we pre-purchased it using the savings from last year, and we had to replenish the account. We also see over an $800,000 increase to the school-based allocations, and that again was through the Fair Student Funding process. So schools chose to put more into their supply lines. And again, on Friday, I sent you a report about the TV studio supplies and equipment. This is where you would see those funds, under grant, and grants and offsets. If I updated the budget figure, that Friday's report showed this. There would be $75,000 under the grant columns, grant column for PEG funding of the TV studios products. And then the other green line here is the digital investment for ESSER, and that's a $1.5 million annual increase that we would need. And that includes replenishing the Chromebooks, when we do have broken Chromebooks, or replenishing them for income and grades, and also a $360,000 fee for insurance, for insuring the actual Chromebooks, and then a data visualization tool that was requested by the chief of schools.
And, and here, I think the question of sustainability is always going to be a question when it comes to this type of investment for technology. We're going to, we're going to have to ultimately see in three years now after we conclude this grant, technology continues to evolve. But it's certainly eligible, certainly a need, and certainly a demand on our community here for the further technology investment.
So I had a, sure, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor, yeah. I mean, I would be comfortable approving the digital investment. I mean, those, those are all needs, they, and we know that they are able to be used for that money. And I, you know, I would be confident in the administration applying that money where it is. Thanks.
Okay, Ms. Darney?
I would agree with Mr. Dillon, this is not a job description that we have to review. We know we need to continue the investment in technology. We discussed the visualization tool, and I believe it was like 50,000 or something like that. So I think we could just move forward in approving this, this page. If my colleagues are comfortable with that, I would make that motion.
All right, sure. Okay, and then I had a question on supplies and textbooks. Is that not eligible under the ESSER grant then?
It is, but these are one of those areas with fund management that if, if it's part of Chapter 70 already, we don't want to move it off when there's no, then we'd have to find a way to put it back on after. And again, you would have to write all this narrative to make sure it's eligible and justified. So it's cleaner to keep it under Chapter 70, being that it's a cost that we expect to maintain when ESSER funds go away.
But I mean, it's 15, it's a million and a half dollars over three years. Wouldn't it be worth the effort of saving that and investing that in classrooms or something?
If you had that need, but remember, you still have significant financial flexibility within ESSER right now. So it's an, you make an important point. You used that strategy last year, Mr. Mayor, if you recall, which is why you're seeing this number now, because this is part of the sustainability of bringing it back into your general operating budget. We can keep it within the grant if you prefer. Our recommendation is that you account for it in the general budget this year.
That's where it's going to end up anyway.
I know, but, and I'm not an accountant, but I'm thinking if you can write it off for three years, why wouldn't you do that now?
You could, you could, but you still have, you still have significant flexibility within. If the committee prefers to do that, I would defer to our accountants though, Mr. Mayor, for the, this is a question of fund management, and I would defer to them on it.
It would require us to move money off of the grant. Like if we did move this onto the grant, we would have to find something to move back on to Chapter 70 to make sure we're fully spending our Chapter 70. Because whenever we don't spend any of these funds, including the grants or the Chapter 70, we give the money back, so we.
Yeah, but don't we have, I mean, we want to buy playground equipment, we want to buy smart boards, we want to buy so many things. I don't see why you wouldn't take advantage of that.
You could, so an example of that is, we think that the, you're going to have enough flexibility for those areas identified within your $15 million facility pool for ESSER.
Yeah, but isn't that the third year?
That's, that's eligible for you as soon as you have the dollars. You could actually, as a committee, choose to spend all 50, is it 58 million?
Yes.
Approximately. You could choose to spend that year one, I imagine some committees may. We're recommending that you spread it across the five. That, this pot of money for the facility upgrades, we're suggesting that as soon as you identify what the need is, you go out to bid and you fund it. So I don't know if playgrounds will be eligible, but we did think we found other dollars there through our process, again, of fund management. We know air quality will be eligible, anything that relates to air quality, and we know technology investments will, will be available. We, we would recommend keeping this within your fund, but it is an important point, Mr. Mayor. You may find, for some reason, and again, the example of last year's budget, remember, we were using the original cares very, very differently. So if you find, for some reason, the economy shifts next year, and you end up in a different financial year, you have flexibility to make some of those shifts in subsequent years of ESSER. So you don't have that need right now, and we would recommend keeping it in Chapter 70.
All right, so let me just say, actually, this is, when we were at the Maury School, for example, I thought we were going to try to install smart boards there, and we.
You did, you funded those through some of your savings this year? Ms. Desmond, how many did we fund of the smart boards?
525?
So we.
At the Maury School?
No, for the, for the district, for the district.
A lot of classrooms over there.
For the district, excuse me. And then 76 additional for our sub-separate programming that have UDL qualities.
All right, so we, all right, so we feel good, we've got smart boards where we want them?
Yes, Ms. Desmond, you already placed that order, I believe, correct? So what is the timeline for that? Just for those who might be watching us, so that they don't think they're going to have a smart board tomorrow.
Well, by July, right?
We're, we're starting to receive them now, actually. So depending on, the, the orders come in, in small batches. So we will have them probably all in district before the end of the school year.
Okay, thank you. All right, so on this one, we're just going to make a motion to accept the bottom line, right? So did we already do that? line, right? So did we already do that motion by Mr.? We did, alright, so.
I seconded.
So a motion by Ms. Darty, seconded by Mr. Dakota to accept the bottom line of, where are we, Ms. Turner, 3,675,38?
Yes.
Okay, alright, roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
She may have had to go.
Yes.
Five days, one absent, approved.
Okay, page 11, Ms. Turner.
So this page only has two changes. It, it has the social workers being moved to the Esser grant. There were 36 general fund-funded social workers, but we added 43 to the Esser grant because six additional social workers were picked through the fair student funding process. I'm sorry, 42. So I'm looking at it, it says 43. Oh, okay. Yes, you're right, you're right. So 43 were added to the Esser grant and then the second thing to point out is school climate specialists, there are six.
The, the important thing to keep in mind as you're looking at new positions, the school climate specialists are new, the social workers are not new. It's a matter of using the grants effectively, kind of comes back to the mayor's message of the last. It's a, it's an allowable grant expenditure that makes complete sense here for the grant application itself, but they're not new positions for the committee. The climate specialists are new positions.
And would that be the same with the guidance counselors? Those are standard job descriptions that we've had.
Yes, we don't have any new, new changes to job description.
Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Those school climate specialist positions, are they Renaissance school related? Or is that?
Yeah, it was a request, requesting collaboration with our principals at our Renaissance schools. These are additional positions that would be at each of our Renaissance schools except for Lowell High School. Lowell High School has a significant amount more support, administrative support than our other Renaissance schools have. That's why the number six. They're gonna go to those, yeah. Alright, thanks.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems like a thousand dollars for guidance supplies seems awfully small for the high school. I mean, all those guidance offices and guidance, it just seems like a thousand dollars is like, what, what about 200, maybe 200 dollars on each one? Seems like they would need more than that, wouldn't they?
I agree.
It just seems small.
It does seem small.
It would have to be taken back to the school for an analysis so that, they could, they could have a number of different ways that they're accounting for their supplies at the school.
Within the schools and they can make a decision. Alright. Thank you.
Yep, Ms. Martin and then Ms. Darty.
Thank you. Recognizing that we do obviously have a, a job description for the social workers, this would be one of those cases where I'd be concerned about ensuring that there's kind of a differentiation between, I know, I know we're putting them all on Esser, but some of these are permanent Chapter 70-funded local funds positions. Some of them are grant-funded and again, should be because they're gonna be, you know, serving a shorter-term purpose. So would we be able to make that, I don't need it in the form of a budget note, but just in terms of our kind of HR and, and as we're, you know, posting that we can kind of differentiate between full-time versus grant-funded?
On our budget book itself, the, the budget document, it shows the social worker that they get provided outside of their fair student funding, funding, and that is funded by us. So those are always going to be the permanent ones. It's the additional, those schools that chose an additional one, it's actually separated out on a different line. So those, when I work with HR, we can actually say those six positions that are being hired could say contingent on grant funding or contingent, because it's not necessarily just grant funding because if they have, if they get extra Chapter 70 money and not the grant, but they choose to not have that extra social worker, they could give it up. That's what the fair student funding process is. So but those, so some of them are permanent through us and those that are not, we can put some kind of contingent on funding on the bottom.
Yeah, I mean, I just think it makes sense to make some kind of, you know, kind of line in the sand so people can understand kind of what that, the, the nature of that position.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ms. Darty?
So I don't know if we would need that in the form of a motion to say that, that we want to have some differentiation between the social worker roles that are gonna be grant-funded by Esser and the ones that are our permanent positions?
I have the, I have the note. That's just, we'll identify that within the job descriptions. You're not taking a vote on job descriptions here this evening at all. So we'll, we can...
So we don't need a motion?
I see, Mr., Dr. Hall took the note, so.
So in terms of the positions that are already established job descriptions, I'm, I don't know how my colleagues feel, but I would just say to move the school climate specialist role onto the suspense account. And if we could get additional information, I know we had somebody in that position for at least part of the year. I think that person resigned in March. I don't remember when the, maybe at the last meeting I saw the personnel notice. I would like something that kind of give, give us a, a brief synopsis of how the role was effective. You know, what schools did, did the role, because if we're going to go down the line and invest $420,000 in this role, I, I had concerns about it when we first talked about it because it doesn't require any certifications or licenses, which is, I think is a standard, you know, by having, let's say, a social worker license, there's a standard of, of quality, you know, that we get with those kind of requirements. So I do have concerns about expanding this role and I, as I recall, I thought it paid pretty well too. I think it's, well, it's, it's like 70, 70,000, right? You're showing 420 for six, right? So, so in terms of this page, I would just recommend that one to go to the suspense account. And if we could have a, a brief report about how that role is effective in impacting our kids, that would help me to understand the position and its value going forward. And I, I would make that as a motion. Sorry, it's long-winded.
Just the six or the one above it too?
Oh, there's a district one?
That one's already existing. So you're talking about the new positions?
Oh, okay.
So the new position...
So the district one was paying 80,000, the one that resigned?
Yeah, that's, yes, yes. Your average, your average teacher salary is 84,000. So I want to make sure, and that's for a 10-month position. So I want to make sure we're understanding because we have a lot of these wage compression issues. Your average teacher salary is at 80, 84,000.
Yeah, but a teacher, I would need to see that job description too then. I didn't, I didn't realize that the one above, because a teacher has, you know, the required education and the certification licensure. And I don't recall that this position had any of those things, a bachelor's degree and a couple of years of experience. I, I would like to include that job description in our, our grouping just so I can review it again.
We can send that, that one to you. That's already posted online. You can actually, we can send that to you tonight.
But as part of the report you're gonna do, showing that the, the role had an impact.
Sure.
Alright, so you want that in motion?
Yeah, do I want me to say it again, shorter?
Just motion to just put the 420 in the suspense account.
Right, and provided the job descriptions with a job description of the district climate specialist and a report on how the role has impacted the district, how it's impacting our kids and why it's an important investment going forward.
Okay.
For 500,000 dollars.
Seconded by, you want a second?
Uh, yeah, I just had a quick comment if that's okay. Um, are we, we're okay with the rest of the positions though, Ms. Darty, correct? Like...
Well, they're established roles, we know.
Alright, yeah, I just want to make sure that those were...
It would just be those.
Okay, thank you.
So we got your motion, yep. Seconded by Mr. Dillon, you got that? Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five days, one absent, approved.
Alright, so a motion to accept the bottom line of page 11 of 4,289,848 by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five days, one absent, approved.
Okay, page 12, Ms. Turner, Ms. Turner?
So on this page, we have several Esser areas. That would include student outreach liaison. That would include seven bilingual family liaisons for the Renaissance schools. It would include a parent ombudsman, which would work at the Family Resource Center. It would include a parent leadership institute director and a parent institute, I mean, parent leadership institute stipends. It would also include parent institute, um, parent leadership institute supplies. Two other areas to note here would include an additional nurse, which would go on the 240 grant. And translation services increased by $200,000 this current year and we continued on with that. And then we were going to increase the contracted services for equity and engagement, which would include things such as smores and anti-racism software and, or programs.
Any questions on this page? Mr. Dillon?
Um, yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I get a definition on ombudsman?
Yeah. So the Family Resource Center right now only employs clerks around registration. Many people call our Family Resource Center for a number of questions that they're not equipped to support. The ombudsman is, helps our families both through advocacy and navigation. So can help a family that calls in to navigate the district. Many of you may experience that when you call my office and you talk to Ms. Palazzo, for instance. She solves problems as well as helping families to navigate the district. The second role there that they play is to also advocate for the needs of families. If for some reason there's a need that's being identified that's not being met within the district. So can work to advocate for families outside of the district if there's a need met. And that's, that's what, that's the, the role within the ombudsman. I have been, some feedback is that maybe we want to use a different title.
Well...
So once you get the...
I mean, I did, I thought it was a typo.
We, we are certainly, we are certainly, we'll explore other, other titles that will be clearer to families as well as those that may be applying into the job. But what we wanted to be clear on is that it's not a front desk receptionist, although you may see that individuals stationed at the front desk at the Family Resource Center for people that come in and answering calls like as you would typically hear a receptionist. That's not the role once they receive those calls.
Received. I honestly thought it was like a parent outreach liaison and it was a typo with a, like a autocorrect.
No, it's a, the outreach liaison's a little bit different.
Also, the, the contracted services for equity and engagement, I mean, that is, I mean, we need to have conversations around that, the, the whole process here, you know, because we talk about the CLSP, CLSP director and, you know, a lot of the professional development is tied to that, I think, and along with some of these dollars here. I mean, that, we, we have to have big conversations about all that stuff. Is the, the equity engagement dollars here all towards that training? Or is that separate as part of the equity office?
So there's a, the equity office does a considerable amount more than the CLSP plan itself, the CLSP plan, but we do have a...
That was my question, yeah.
Yeah, but we do have the subcommittee that has to be scheduled that was requested at the last meeting. So we'll get that on the docket and you'll have an opportunity for a in-depth discussion at the subcommittee.
Alright, thank you.
Was there a question about the student outreach or did somebody just mention that, Mr. Mayor?
No, I said it because I, I was thinking ombudsman might have meant outreach liaison. No, I'm good with that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. While we're on this page, and the Family Resource Center is at the top of that page, congratulations to Rebecca Duda being elected to the Drakea School Committee yesterday. Yeah, so congratulations to her. Thank you.
Ms. Darty?
Thank you. And I know we're gonna be getting job descriptions for all these new roles that we can look at, but I, I have to say what jumps out at me, the parent academy director at 120,000, that seems, again, that's a salary over what our Family Resource Center coordinator is making. And I guess I would really have to see what, what the job is gonna entail, that it would command a principal-level salary.
That's below your assistant principal. So we can bring you, we, the, the top of your assistant principal level is 125,000 approximately. That's the top of the assistant principal schedule. So we can certainly bring you more information, but we do have these, there are some wage compression questions for sure.
And is this gonna be in a union position?
Um, we would have to, we're, we're working through all of those conversations with our unions.
And the parent academy stipends for 274,400, can you explain what that's gonna be?
Yeah, so that will calculate across, much like you look at your Lowell Teacher Academy where we can provide stipends for current employees to provide out that support for courses or even stipends for parents. We've used both with our, in different ways. So this is stipends based on a calculation of a certain number of hours of available courses, workshops, events at each school. The stipends could be allocated across the current staff or could be allocated across to parents if we went in that direction and we provided that across with our pilot as well. I believe we had some parents, Ms. Phillips, correct, that provided out some training. So the calculation, Ms., Ms. Turner, do you have the calculation that led to that forecast?
Yes, I took 28 schools for 35 weeks for eight hours a week at 35 dollars an hour to come up with that. So I was assuming that there would be a couple of different teachers that provided X amount of hours, you know, like eight hours, whether it's four teachers doing two hours each week or if it's four teach, or if it's, you know, three teachers doing three hours.
So it's a certain number of hours at a certain pay that allows us then to organize it around the courses and workshops that are offered at each community, which could be different based on the communities.
Any other questions? No?
Do we move with the suspense or are we leaving this here? Like being that they exist, the positions exist, are we moving them to suspense or?
For which one?
For the parent in, um, leadership academy or the student outreach liaison?
Yeah, they exist.
All of them?
Yeah, all of them.
Okay.
So we need a bottom line on all the green.
Are you moving all the green positions?
Yep.
The bilingual family liaisons are in the general fund, so just talk about the Esser new, new positions.
Only the seven, there are seven in the Esser funds for bilingual parent liaisons. So as far as the, the bottom line is what's listed, which is 1 million, I mean, 1,598,214?
Yeah, but don't we need a, we need a total for the green first, right?
Okay, alright. So all of the green is 928,000? So all of the Esser funds?
All the Esser funds, yeah.
Oh, 928...
I, I can't hear it.
Oh, sorry, 928,000.
928,000?
Yes.
So we need a motion to put the Esser funds in suspense by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Darty of 928,000. Roll call.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five days, one absent, approved.
Okay, so bottom line for page 12 to accept is 1,598,214 by Mr., motion by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call. by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
Okay, uh, page 13, Ms., Ms. Turner?
The only thing on this page that has changed would be the increase to summer school transportation. It was an estimate of $400,000 using S R funds.
The same recommendation would apply, uh, as the previous summer school.
I'd move to approve, keeping the transportation costs in.
Okay, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Ms. Darney. Any questions? Motion to approve for bottom line of page 13 of 11,616,517. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
I'm sorry, excuse, are we leaving that, those transportation dollars in there?
Yeah, for that one.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, yep, yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
Huh? Did you say here, or yes? Oh, I thought you said here. Okay, um, all right, page 14.
The changes on this page, um, are corresponding to the reduction in the academic physical education. I wanted to increase this page by .5 for the Administrator of Athletics, which would give it a 1.0. And then, also, the, another change that is listed here is the PE teacher dash lead, .5 of $50,000. Again, we'll give that to the, um, high school, for them to determine how to oversee the physical ed evaluation. And the other change here would be, on the second section, it's called Afternoon in the ARX Program. It went up by the same amount that we reduced the district band teachers. We put the full amount of 251,400 in that line, so that all of the funds are still being used, um, for the ARX and with students. So, if we vote on this page, I recommend that we vote with a number that I have, which includes the additional .5 for the Administrator of Athletics.
All right, and what's the bottom line number on that one, for the A.D.?
The, um, the total, or just for the A.D.?
Yeah, just the A.D., what's it?
His, the position is 1, um, 123,908? 908.
Okay, and then, Mr. Dillon?
Uh, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Another thing that could definitely use consideration is our coaching pay. Um, and I know it has been tied to, you know, salaries in the past of, like, our, our teaching staff, um, but there hasn't been an increase there in a long time. And so, I don't know, I'd, I'd suggest, uh, you know, bringing our, our coaching, coaches' pay, um, you know, up in line. How, I, I, I feel like it fell out of our, our contract talks, um, that, that, those, that coaching pay increasing incrementally with teaching staff, or, or, you know, I don't know when that left, but there doesn't seem like a pro, like, that we have a process right now for in, increasing those over time, even with just, you know, uh, basic inflation, cost of living, you know, that type of stuff. How, I mean, how are those going to move, I guess, is my question right now, if we stay in place where we are?
Uh, I have a note here, I'll have to look into that and conduct that analysis, but I have that note here. Analysis per Dillon, it's in my margin.
All right, well, 'cause I think they were tied in contractually, though, uh, prior, and they haven't been, it seems like, so, all right, thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Is, is that ac, I'm sorry, I wasn't aware of that. They, they haven't been tied to the, they weren't tied to the current contract?
Uh, good.
Or the previous, I know we're in negotiations now for year one, but Mr. Dillon's absolutely right, it's always been tied to the percentage increase each that's negotiated.
Dr. Hall?
It's my, it's my recollection that the last few contracts, we've exempted out, uh, the increases for the, uh, coaches and advisors, I believe, but I'll double-check that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Dillon?
Yeah, just to clarify, Ms. Martin, I, I think that is, um, accurate, that in contract talks, they have been exempted that year, for whatever reason, um, in order to save money, and I mean, that, you know, I think we know how that sometimes goes, but, um, they really should be, I think, uh, it, it should be considered they get back that way. Thank you.
Any other questions on page 14? Um, Ms. Turner, I have a couple of questions. Uniforms, athletics, do we know if that's enough money?
They, um, have a budget, and they usually just, I mean, they haven't said anything about it not being enough, and I think what happens with the other lines, are when they have extra money in other lines, they end up buying, you know, using it to support whatever line they need more in.
All right, is there a way to add a little more money to that, Mr. Superintendent?
We could, I can take...
From somewhere?
I can take that note, too, uh, Mr. Mayor, so, let me add that note in the margin here, and we'll assess it.
All right, you'll have an answer Monday?
Yes.
If we come back, okay. And then, what about Boston Lyric Opera Project? What was that line for?
That was actually brought to my attention, and in my modified budget that I sent on Friday, I had hidden that, um, removed that line, it's an old line, so I did go in and do that, but that was on Friday, and we're not working off of that now, so, but it, in my final copy, I'll make sure that I remove it.
All right, and then, what about, since we're on uniforms, marching band uniforms, where does that fall?
That would actually be, um, under band camp supplies, or under, um, yeah, that, it's not, it doesn't exist here, so I would assume that they've bought them under the Supplies and Instrumental Music Program, but it's not, it doesn't exist since I've been here, so...
All right, can we just make some notes for the next meeting, just check on...
Yes.
Uh, uniforms for athletics and band, and, uh, supplies, things like that?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so, we're all set on this page? Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the, uh, athletics uniforms, uh, I'm hoping that there's a, a certain level of equity between the boy sports and the girl's sports, making sure that the girls are also getting new uniforms when appropriate, as I'm hearing...
Yeah, that's why we want to make sure that there's, they're equitable, and people getting decent uniforms. The process, the problem we've had over the years, too, is all different colors, right?
Yes.
So, we want to make sure they're all same color, um, we don't want to... Ms. Martin, any questions on that? No? Okay, all right, so, we need a bottom line on page 14 of 1,833,372.
No.
No?
No, we, we, if we're adding the .5 for the Athletic Director, it would be 1,895,326.
Yeah. 326?
Yes.
No, that's not...
Wouldn't it go up, though, instead of down?
It did, it was 1,833,372, and it went up to 1,895,326.
All right, so, 1,895?
Yes.
32, 326? 326? 326? 326. Okay, so, motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota, roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
Okay, page 15, Ms. Turner?
So, on this page, we have, um, a Chapter 70 change, which would be an Assistant to the Facilities Director of $50,000. We would, um, see a green row, meaning an, an S R addition of a District-wide Safety Specialist that was previously funded by another grant. And we also have, at the bottom, the District-wide HVAC Investment, which, again, as the Superintendent explained, this is a placeholder. We haven't received any RFPs or, um, things like that, so this number could go up or down. It's more or less just our balance and placeholder.
I'm just, so, the Assistant Facilities Director, is that a, a new position?
Yes, Dr. Hall?
Ms. Darney, it'd be a assistant, too, so it's not the assistant, it's, um, going to take a lot of pressure off, uh, the Facility Director in delivering, uh, supplies or items, uh, to the various schools, so he can work on oversight and management, instead of running those errands. Uh, so it'd be collecting equipment, dropping off equipment, uh, dropping off orders, PPE, checking all that stuff. So, it'd be a new position, which would probably come in right around, um, below Junior Custodian on the pay scale.
So, is that a job description that we need to look at?
Yes.
So, should we send that, should it be, it shouldn't, it's not green because it's not S R funds, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
You would flag it if, uh, the same as you'd done the others, to keep with?
So, I'd make that a motion to move that into suspense.
Yep. You also have the reverse occurring with the District Safety Specialist, the District Safety Specialist is an existing job description that you already have.
Right, so that one's automatically going to go to the expense account, I'm just, because we do have, we created these new positions, the Facility Area Managers, so those are, I don't know if they're both filled, but we have two, um, that are going to be responsible for clusters of schools, as I understand it. So, right now, like, if a school needs a piece of equipment, why couldn't the Facility Area Manager do that? Why do we need another position to be? I mean, I guess I'd have to see the job description to understand...
Yeah, we can...
...what the role will do more fully.
Okay. It's noted, thank you.
All right, any other questions on this page?
Can I ask, just to be clear, so the, the, um, safety position, we're moving that from a previously funded grant position on to our Chapter 70, is that correct?
Yes, you paid for it in your prior grant, the grant actually ended prior to this year, we paid for it with savings this year, and we'll move it into the S R going into next year.
So, it's going into S R, but it is an existing job description?
Yes.
And that we don't need to...
Yes.
Thank you.
So, for clarity, do I put it in suspense or not?
Yeah, the, we're going to move the 50, that Assistant, uh, to Facilities Director into suspense.
The new position.
Just the new position.
Don't put that one.
Not the green one.
Not the safety specialist one, that we already have?
Not the 120 one.
Okay.
Huh? Yeah, this one? Okay. So, a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Dakota, to move the Assistant Facilities Director 50,000 into the suspense account. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Yep.
Yep.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
Okay, any other questions on this page? Um, I have a couple of quick questions. So, building custodians, um, has Mr. Underwood given you a kind of a recommendation on that, or, like, 'cause years ago, we used to have 110 or 115 custodians, we've cut it down a bit, um, and we sort of, maybe not the high school, but the other schools were a little bit under, understaffed, maybe. Do you feel comfortable with that number? The buildings feel like they're getting, feel like you're getting your buildings cleaned?
Dr. Hall?
Uh, we feel comfortable with that projected, uh, number, Mayor, but we certainly can, um, talk to, uh, Mr. Underwood and confirm that for the next meeting.
Okay. Um, all right, and then, one other question. Uh, the man out overtime, do you use that all the time?
Dr. Hall?
Does that get depleted?
Uh, we have been depleting it, but we've cut back on that to some degree this year.
Okay. And then, the other thing is, there's no money in the school resource offices, how does that get funded?
The city, that's through the police department.
Through the police, okay. Okay, all right, thank you. Any other questions? Motion to approve, page 15, by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Bottom line figure of, go ahead?
6,24,978, which is a reduction of the 50,000 going to the suspense account.
Roll call?
That was seconded by Mr. Dakota, right? Ms., Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Six yeas, five yeas, one absent, approved.
Page 16?
So, page 16 is just, um, it's an approximate increase of 5.3 million dollars on health insurance, which is, look, um, as you know, S R 1, we paid 4.7 million in health insurance onto the grant, and now we moved it back, plus an additional 6% increase for this current year.
Any questions on this page? Mr. Dakota?
Just a quick question. How many people do we still have on longevity? There's got to be maybe one or two? One? One?
There's a few. There's still a few.
Still a few?
Yeah, you asked this, and, um, last year, and then I looked back, and, and there were still, like, 10, at least 10.
Okay, just curious.
Any questions on this page? I know. I'm glad to see that I've lived that, when I started as a youngster, like Mr. Dillon, that was up to, like, a million three, or even more, and now it's down to, you know, 10,000, so, finally. Um, okay, so, we just need to accept the bottom line on this one of 20,297,192, so motion to accept by Ms. Darney, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
All right, page 17?
Page 17 is, um, rental of buildings, and that includes the 270,000 dollars for the Central Admin Office lease, and 282,672 for the 80-day school.
Okay, Mr. Dillon?
Um, no, I would move to approve this page.
Motion approved by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Ms. Darney. Uh, bottom line of 5,52, right?
Yep.
672.
Yes.
Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
Page 18?
Page 18, page 18 is the capital outlay page, and it includes, um, no, there, there aren't any changes, it's 100,000 for capital improvement, and 125 for equipment replacement. And as you know from the HVAC page, that if we have any additional, um, improvements, we can use it from the HVAC investment page on, um, S R. So, this was 225,000.
Motion to approve by Ms. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon. Bottom line, 225,000. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Darney?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.[1711.32]
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
All right, and we'll save page nineteen for Monday? Uh, page nineteen, Ms. Turner?
Okay, so page nineteen is um a slight increase to added district tuition, and I can, I'm emphasizing this just because the Special Ed Director um was adamant about this. We never know, when we don't have room in the, in our current district programs, that some students could go out, so the amount could increase. What I did is I only did the current student population with a five percent tuition rate increase, so that's the, why you see a three hundred and forty thousand dollar increase, but that could change, and you know what we do throughout the year is, I'll just give you projections monthly, so that you can see if it does increase um with, where we don't have enough funding in the line. And just a, as a, um, just a reminder, we do have a healthy circuit breaker balance report, so if we did find ourselves going over, we do have a rainy day fund.
Motion approved by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, bottom line of five million eight-seven-two, two-four-one. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
All right, so now we need to do the suspense account first, Mary? So do you have a bottom line for us, for the suspense account?
Yes. The bottom line is seven million seven hundred and sixty-seven thousand four hundred eighty-two dollars in suspense.
Sure, one more time. Seven million?
Seven million seven hundred sixty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Okay. Motion to accept the bottom line of seven million seven hundred seven, sixty-seven four eighty-two in the suspense account by Mr. Dakota, seconded by Ms. Martin. Roll call?
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Question? Sorry.
Oh, go ahead, you can do that.
Okay, roll call, yep.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark? Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, approved.
Okay, Ms. Turner?
So for clarity, do I redo the budget with all the voted um items that we did up until today, with the suspense account with this amount now? With the list underneath suspense of the ones that were just put into there, so that you know which ones to send back?
Yeah, it's just exactly like the, it'd be like, exactly like these page. It'd just be an additional page that gets added in, line item, suspense account, then each one of the positions or things is listed out with the amount.
So everything that was voted on today, I can update and upload for Friday, and that's con- undo?
Yep, okay. Absolutely.
Are we, are we, sorry, Mr. Mayor, are we, so, we're saying that like page twenty of this book would be um presented as like the positions we moved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
All right. So, I guess the question now is, how much time do we think we need to finish it up? Should we recess until Monday, or recess and do some of the budget on Wednesday and have the regular meeting?
I think we, we need the information that we've asked for, and I know the team is working hard to get that stuff to us, so, uh, my question is, how do we do a, a subcommittee meeting before we make the final budget? Right? Because if we're trying to do those decisions on Monday, we need to figure in another meeting, and we're already having three meetings this week.
Well, you have a, you have the budget hearing on Monday, and then you have a regularly scheduled meeting next Wednesday, so you have a, a, another budget hearing meeting, essentially supposed to just as this, for Monday, and then you also have another regularly scheduled board, school committee meeting on the following Wednesday.
So, are you recommending that we have the subcommittee meeting on Monday, then? After the, I mean, I don't know that-
Which subcommittee are you referring to now?
The one for the, what?
Sure, Ms. Martin?
I think, so what I think, Ms. Dougherty, is that you're still feeling that we need to do the Personnel Subcommittee before we can make official decisions on the suspense account. I think the idea that I had had was that these things can stay in the suspense account, we can do the Personnel Subcommittee the end of next week, the week after that, we've bought ourselves some time, because those positions are in suspense, so we can come back to them at any time. So the pressure, the question would be, do we feel, or does the administration feel they're gonna have enough additional information about the questions we've asked tonight, whether it's job descriptions or otherwise? I mean, we've obviously asked for additional information on a lot of different things, positions at the high school, you know, supplies, all those types of things. Would the administration feel that it's warranted for us to have the Monday night meeting, for them to be able to report back on those things, that then we could take action on, ahead of the May nineteenth meeting? Because we can move on May nineteenth on everything in suspense, those things can just, we can vote on the entire budget with those items in suspense. The only reason to have a meeting Monday night would be if there's additional information coming from the, the administration on some of the other topics, that you would wanna move forward in a definitive way.
Sure, Ms. Turner?
I just wanna add to that point, I think that makes perfect sense, but I don't want, I mean, I think it was something Ms. Clark said earlier, this, this feeling that you're rushing through these new job descriptions. Like, if we've already made the decision, we're gonna look at that, I'm thrilled to think we don't have to do it tomorrow, that we, you know, and that you'll have the time you need to get the full job descriptions with, you know, whether it's a union position or not, you know, that means some discussion with our um representative bodies. So that probably is not gonna be ready by Friday. It would have to be ready by Friday, and then we would have to cram and look at whatever, how many positions we just sent, seven million dollars worth of positions into the suspense account, to do our due diligence in reading those job descriptions.
Yeah.
So I, I'm thinking that Monday wouldn't be needed.
My, my suggestion would be, oh no, you don't want a meeting, I got it, Ms. Turner. My suggestion would be, it's always easier to cancel a meeting than to add a meeting. I would leave your schedule as is, I can work with the mayor, it also gives you a holding, I've got a couple of subcommittee meetings that were requested of us that we haven't yet scheduled, so, uh, my suggestion would be, leave your calendar as is right now, it's easier to cancel a meeting than it is to add a meeting. The timeline you're working with, uh, that you should keep in mind, is we would like to have the permissions to post at your first June meeting, so that way we can get the positions filled to start the fiscal year, 'cause it will take some time to get them posted, interviewed,